Night. Lord, we do lift up Ms. Sandra Goldman tonight. Lord, we just thank you for what you've already done for her rehab, and we just pray that you'd continue to work with her, Lord, on that, and we know you can heal her. Lord, we just thank thee for this opportunity we have tonight. In Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Salute pledge.
Our pledge alleges to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Councilman Shaw and Councilman Moore for the yes. And thank you, Councilman Moore, for remembering Ms. Goldman.
Shaw, count.
I'm sorry.
Okay. I'll forgive you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Councilman Shaw, I do know the difference, Rob. But thank you for remembering Ms. Goldman. Ms. Goldman is, Ms. Sandra Goldman is the backbone of this city. She has served under five mayors, and we've been remiss if we did not say how much we miss her. She is a wealth, she has a wealth of knowledge, and she is the hardest working person in City Hall. So we do honor her tonight. Thank you so much, Rob, for remembering her.
Mayor, I'd just like to say that we appreciate Ms. Hall, Ms. Amanda Hall pitching in and covering us during this time at Ms. Goldman's out. Thank you very much.
Ms. Hall, can you give us a roll call to determine a court?
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Prater?
Here.
Mr. Shaw?
Here.
Mr. Green?
Present.
Mr. Hart?
Here.
Our present mayor.
We do have a court meeting is in session. Announcements? Are there any announcements? Is Mr. Jones here tonight? Mr. Jones from Chamber of Management Company?
Yes, he is not.
He's not here?
Um.
Okay. We'll go on then. Other comments as they relate to item on the agenda. Would you say your name, please? Welcome to City Hall. Glad to have you.
Thank you.
Your name, please?
Roseanne Thompson. Uh, I'm a citizen of this town that I'm very proud of. And I wish that we could take care of some of the city business instead of the school business because we got problems just like the city does. We could give you permission to say that Bastrop High was with that ACT problem because we're not. Not only that, Mr. Cullen, we got murders.
Oh, wait. Uh, Mr. Mr. Can you turn the camera over there, please? Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Thompson. Would you start over?
Oh, yes, I will.
Okay.
I have my part in doing that.
Yes.
We didn't say Bastrop High have not signed anything with the city, saying that we want to be a part of the ACT over there because you have ACT every day at Bastrop High. Not only that, uh, Mayor, I wish that we could, you would focus on the drug problems we have here, the murder rate that we have here, the break-ins that we have here, because that's an area where you are the mayor. School is dealing with their issue. You can't take over to school and run the city too.
Do you want me to respond at some point?
I don't care what you do. I would just let you know.
Okay, go ahead. So what is it you're opposed to? You're opposed to me helping kids with the ACT?
No, no, kids being helped every day. You worry about the murder rate that's here. You worry about, what is it? You done had all these young people to get killed. You saying, well, let the public tell us. We, we got law enforcement people here that supposed to be doing their job, and I have no doubt in what they would do. But you can't run the school system and the city at the same time. I'm for kids getting education. I'm for that.
Are you sure?
Are you sure?
Do you know how many of your kids have an 18 on the ACT, Ms. Thompson? Do you have any idea?
That's not, that's not your worry though.
It is, ma'am.
You worry about this city and getting jobs here. You worry about getting jobs here, and you worry about those kids that's getting killed for nothing. We got a problem. And some kind, some kind of way, I look at Monroe, they trying to address the problem that what we doing, talking about it, saying, well, people need to get involved. Yes, they do. But you also got to run this city like you the mayor.
So what you're saying is, don't help kids with ACT?
Well, I'm telling you, stay out of business.
What is your business?
And worry about the city and what's going on inside this city.
Well, if, if you would define what the school board's business is, because you've got thirty-six kids out of a hundred and fifty-two seniors with an 18.
But, Mr. Cullen, that ain't just talk.
Only twenty-six can get into a 40 color.
But you was running the problem. Out, you, out of thirty kids, you had one, one.
That what?
That scored high on that ACT.
Ms. Thompson, that's a lie. That is, I'm not calling you a lie, but that's a lie.
I will bring you the stats of what you did when you did that school.
Well, look, we're not gonna argue with you.
No, we're not.
But, but that's a lie.
No, it's not.
Okay, well.
But anyway, Mr. Cullen, I would appreciate that. I'll post it too, uh, because we got the paperwork too. But anyway, I would appreciate coming from a taxpayer and a citizen.
Okay.
I would want you to.
Thank you, thank you for your comments. You got any more?
I would want you to. I, I just want you to do your job. We gonna try to do our, just trying to get some of your burden off.
Well, my job is taking on the development, and all of the schools fell down except one.
Well, look at the city.
Uh, Bastrop High is eight points from an F.
Look at the city, Mr. Cullen.
Ms. Thompson, you all are doing a horrible job.
We ain't got no job coming here. No job. Thank you.
You guys are doing a horrible job.
You doing, you doing a horrible job yourself. You lying.
So, so let me get this straight, because I don't run from issues.
I don't want ignor. You don't want to.
I said I don't run from issues. I s- issue.
Well, you don't need to run from that.
I didn't say anything about ignorant.
Do your job with the city.
I didn't say anything. I didn't call ignorant. I didn't call ignorant. I said issues.
Do your job with the city.
Ms. Thompson, I have not published that Bastrop High School is partnering with anything.
It was in the paper.
If, if, if it was, they made a mistake. I did not tell the paper that I'm partnering with the, the school district will not partner with us to give free, even though Louisiana Tech does.
That's Louisiana Tech. Do that free.
I know. We're not, we're not good enough for Bastrop High. We're good enough for Louisiana Tech.
Let's not deal with the city. We got a lot of rock.
Well, let's go on.
We.
Uh, let me state something, gentlemen, because these gentlemen sometimes worry about perception. And let me make something perfectly clear. Uh, I have sixty of these. They cost eight hundred and, 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 uh, these are Casio FX one fif- one fifteen DS plus calculators, scientific. I have sixty of these that was purchased not by the school board, not by the city, in this box that just came in today to help Bastrop High kids get ACT scores to be in college. Tomorrow morning, I will be in Grambling State University to help kids, to help kids get into college. There are nine kids that, that, there were seven that the school system turned out that didn't have an 18 in English nor nineteen in Math. The school system's, uh, ACT scores plummeted last year. The school performance score for Bastrop High, look it up, is a fifty-five. It dropped from a sixty-four point nine to a fifty-eight, I'm sorry. With the new scheme where the kids not only have to score an eighteen, they've got to score twenty-one to get the points, Bastrop High will be an F school if they were judged on the twenty-nineteen requirements that you got to get a twenty-one. Now, Ms. Thompson and three other members, to my knowledge, I've talked to them and begged them to let me go over there and work free in room one forty-one and one forty-two, and they denied me.
Sure did.
Yes, you did.
Sure did.
Because.
You tell them why.
I have a slight.
Yes, you do. Cause you wasn't ever there, and plus, those scores did not go up on the news.
Ms. Thompson, if I, if I thought you had, wait, I'm gonna end this, I'm gonna end this because it's under anybody.
Please do.
But if I thought you had the resources, and I don't have them either, I would sue you, sue you for libel because that's not true.
I would give, Mr. Cullen, you know what? It'll come out in court. I encourage you to sue me. I encourage you to sue me.
Ms. Thompson, I wouldn't waste my time.
Please, please.
Uh, hey, Ms., a lady from Chicago donated one thousand dollars for those calculators to have ACT prep, free ACT prep, the same prep that we offer at LSU, and the same test that, same prep that we're gonna be offering February third in the new Bossier City, the new, the new Louisiana Tech Learning Success Center at Bossier City on February third and the first Saturday in April. We're gonna do that free for the kids at Bastrop High.
Absolutely.
I'm not charging a dime. My, I'm paying my staff, and I'm seeking to do it at a building that we have leased. Uh, some of my councilmen has voiced concern because they are saying, uh, you gotta watch out for public perception.
Yep.
Uh, well, I told one, I told my council just a while ago, I don't give, uh, I don't give, uh, uh, a care when it comes down to helping kids get into college. That's what I do.
You would care about those people that's been murdered and nobody have saw those murdered?
Ms. Thompson, I can do both.
Focus on that.
But, but, your time is up. Next, any other comments on anything? Come on, Ms. Sandra, how you doing?
Good.
Great.
Ms. Hendrix, um, I have two things or two of the items that I want to speak about. One is number eighteen. I'm gonna talk about it first, and then I would like to go to item number, I believe it's eleven.
Okay.
Uh, no, I'm sorry, number fifteen.
Yes, ma'am.
On eighteen, I believe this is, um, for the self-service.
Yes.
That you will be wanting to appoint to see anyone that's outside, whether it's outside of this parish.
Yes.
That you can appoint that. Um, you know, we pay tax dollars here, and we want local people. Now, to me, if you want to extend it, you having a hard time filling that position within the city, I would like for you to extend it to the parish. There are a lot of good people that I'm sure.
May I interject? May I interject? Because what happened, Ms. Hendrix, my desire was to limit it to twenty-two miles. I didn't want to extend it to the city limits of Monroe and West Monroe, the big, our big competitors for policemen. Just hold, let, this is probably gonna be tabled tonight. But let me state something. I asked Ms. Goldman to get a census of our policeman and fireman, and she got a census of the, of the firemen. I think Chief Crowder, you have thirty-eight people. The requirements are, are that you live in the area served, which is the city. Now, there are four people out of thirty-eight that meet the requirements, having five years and living in the city. Okay? I felt, and I trust the firemen and their intelligence enough. We already have a forty-mile radius, hiring radius. We can't hire someone, our policies prohibit us hiring someone beyond forty miles. I didn't want to go forty miles. I thought that was too far. But the reason I asked the council to, to do this is because I trust Chief Crowder and his selection process, and I trust those thirty-eight men to get the best representative on the, on the, uh, Civil Service Board because the police and fire can elect their own. They have an election, and they choose. That's democracy. And, 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 and I thought that it would be good if we trust them because they know who they want to represent them. To serve on the Civil Service Board takes a lot of strength because you might have your chief, the, uh, fire chief before them for an infraction of a rule. I wanted them to select the strongest person possible. So, so you can blame me for it. I take the blame and the responsibility for wanting to expand it. But the, when, when we called this Civil Service Examiner, they sent me a sheet of paper, and they said, you've got to do it either your area served or no boundaries. You can't do twenty-two miles. You can't do this. You can't do, they said either one of these two. They're in or they're out. So under the in, Ms. Hendrix, there was only four people out of thirty-eight. Now, who's to say that three of them wouldn't want to serve? That leaves a de facto or a default person serving. These are the possibilities. So as chief executive of this city, I'm looking at the best interest of our police department and so they could get the best person that they want. And our fire department, because I trust the policeman and I trust the firemen to make their decision. And if they wanted to get someone who lived in, 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 in Parable, just across the state line, I mean, the parish line, then I wanted them to be able to, to do that. So, so that's on me.
Okay. Well, that's why I'm here to tell you, as a citizen and as a parish, I have a business here, and I live in the parish, and I feel like there's a lot of people that would feel the same way. You can extend, instead of it just being someone who lives in the city, at least it's someone from the parish. And I agree with you. They are the best. They can make the best choices.
They're the best judges.
But to be able to, I feel like we should have enough good people.
We should.
We get more house parish that we do not have to have something, someone that is outside that, and I think there needs to be a limit on it. Now, that, that is the only thing I want to say about that resolution, and I'd like to move on.
Well, I appreciate your, I appreciate your, well, thank you.
All right. I'd like to move on to.
Hold on. Mayor, can we go ahead and put this behind us on this item eighteen?
Um, it, it's my understanding that the council does not want to act on item eighteen anyway, and I do not want to entertain it because I think we need more time. I won't bring it back up this year. Is that satisfactory view? For you, I won't bring it up this year. We'll live for another year with it as it is, limited to the city limits of Bastrop. That's what it says today. The city limits of Bastrop. That's the area we serve. We don't serve more as parish, Ms. Hendrix. We don't serve across, uh, Br- on Brendel Street. Okay, that's across. Get it? On North Brendel. Yeah. So, the area served, that's where they're limited. I wanted to expand it because I trust policemen and I trust partners. I trust them to make their own decisions who they want to represent.
So, Mayor, you saying that you don't trust us? So if I move outside of District B and in parish, I could still represent District B? Is that what you telling me?
No, that's a district. You know the political.
Yeah, you know it too. But you, you belittled the council. I, I don't like that, Mayor.
I know. I was not belittling the council. I was not belittling the council. I just said it was my opinion. I didn't say, I didn't speak any falsehoods, Mr. Prater. I said that I felt that the thirty-nine firemen that, that, that worked for this department, Fire District Two and, and our fire department, I felt that they should be able to elect the strongest person that they choose. And I trust them, I trust their intelligence, and I trust their integrity to do that. So, I didn't see, you know, Mayor Hawkins once said, when he's in an airplane and he flies over Bastrop, he can't see the city limits. Okay, so, uh, we, I'm, I'm sorry, Ms. Hendrix. I don't want to cut you off. Go on with your other one. I will not bring this, I will not put this up on the next, on the next, uh, agenda. I will leave it as the city council wishes, and as you wish, we, we're not, we can't expand it.
You can't expand it just to more house parish.
I choose, uh, they gave us two options. The area served, what area, what area do you think we serve? The city police?
The city, the city of Bastrop.
The city of Bastrop. Well, the people that serve, there are five members. Three of them have to abide by living in the city, having lived here five years.
I understand.
Okay. But two, but the police and the fire are voted upon by the police and the fire. And we can waive the requirements that they live in the area they serve. We can either waive it or leave it as it is.
I understand. I'd really like to move on.
Thank you.
Uh, first of all, I would like to thank, as Isaac Row, for the job that he's done in, um, like, uh, edging the sidewalks and things. He done a fantastic job. It makes it look so much nicer. And it was just so good to see him working and getting it and how nice that it looked. And I want to give him a A plus on that one.
Thank you.
I also want to thank, um, Mr. DeValle and Jay Blatton for helping me put up all the city decorations. Of course, now we gotta take them down, but I want to thank them for doing that also. Um, in relation to number fifteen, and this is in, uh, building another park. I want to give you a little bit of background, some of Keaton Morehouse Beautiful and what we've already done, that I do know that what I counted, we actually have, and I think I'm missing a park, but I'm not sure, we have East Madison. We have Carter Park, Forest of Wanton Look and King Park. We have Dotson Park. We have what's called Wild Forest Park, and Welch Street Playground that we're responsible for. Is there any other?
Jackson.
Jackson Park.
Jackson, Jackson. So there are seven parks that, that the city's responsible for. Uh, I do understand too that Mr. DeValle would be the one and Mr. Gray would be the one working together to make sure those parks are maintained. Also, uh, they also maintained, which we spent, uh, forgot to grant, the three hundred, three hundred thousand dollars, those entryways. In saying that, I want to tell you about the volunteerism that has gone in in maintaining just kid parks. Or, and actually, I think we kept the three parks, cause I believe we got the Dotson Park too. There's been security cameras put up at, um, East Madison. We, they cleaned it up. We've had security lights. We painted, and we've made it a smoke-free zone. In Carter Park alone, we've gotten grants that restored eight restrooms. We've had security lights put up or replaced. We've actually put tennis court lights up. And we actually have the trash cans out. That's, comes not from the city, but that comes from what Keaton Morehouse Beautiful has done. Uh.
Ms. Sandy, Ms. Sandy, excuse me. Um, they also did some dugout work. Made it look really nice.
Oh, okay. I thought they did. Okay, some dugout work, but I wasn't sure on that. Okay. I thought they did some dugout work. Um, in the previous administration, I'm gonna say previous administration, not previous administration, there's been an issue of maintaining everything. That is why you've had Keaton Morehouse Beautiful come in and help with it, because the city did not have funds for the maintenance. And whether or not you are given something, you have to maintain it. Nothing is free. So, this came from people wanting a better park and a better place for a children's park. That's what all that work was done for. And going back and saying you want to purchase another park in which you cannot maintain.
Well, let me stop you here.
Can I speak first? I want to go ahead and get your chance.
Well, I just want to address.
Can I please get your chance?
Go ahead. Yeah.
So, in order to do that, then you still gotta have maintenance and, and all that. I have been here several times just to keep the maintenance part up on four entryways in which we had grants. As a businessperson, uh, and owner of a business, I'm gonna tell you about saying we need property taxes, or we need, um, we have to pay property tax and inventory tax. In two years, this city has not been business friendly to us in that we have paid more out for city property tax and more out for inventory tax than what the city has even purchased from us. And you're gonna ask city or business people to help maintain with tax dollars another park in which we already have seven. Not only that, you know, you had talked earlier in, uh, one of the meetings that I attended to about the water system. And in that meeting, you would not extend the service of the water system, what we're doing with the water system, what we have now, people's water service. Because from my understanding of what you said was, if we can drop our population below ten thousand.
I didn't say if we hit, if we can drop. I said if it drops. I have no control.
Well, if it drops below ten thousand, we might can get a grant. So you want it to wait and see. So I'm asking, if you want it to drop below ten thousand.
I didn't say I want it. Don't, don't, please don't worry.
That was the impression I got.
I'm not gonna let you misquote me.
I know, I know.
I'm not gonna let you misquote me.
If it drops below ten thousand, we will not have, we will have less than another thousand people here, and then you want a park.
No, no, hold on, hold on, Ms. Sandy, Ms. Sandy, please. I'm not gonna sit here and let you misquote me.
Okay.
Okay. Well, no, no, since you want to do it, let's get it straight of what I said, and we can look back. Every ten years, the Census Bureau takes census. This is what I said. And the USDA and the government classify cities from, from one to ten thousand in one category, from ten to fifty thousand in another, and from fifty thousand and above in another. The ones from ten thousand to, to fifty thousand have to compete for, uh, community development block grants. You submit, and they put them into pools, and they, 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 they wave a magic wand, and they say, oh, these are the projects we're gonna fund. The cities and, or places that have less than ten thousand fall in a different category for funding. As mayor of the city of Bastrop, I'm gonna look down every avenue. That's why I appointed a, or asked these gentlemen to appoint a person to the Utilities Commission to study. Now, let me tell you something. I had someone tell me, Mr. Floyd and I were talking, about a cable company that sold, and immediately they pulled people, how many installers do you have now? Two. How many people in the office? They went to one and backed up to two, I believe. When companies sell, uh, with Centralink and their, their acquisitions, things change. Things change. Well, a franchise agreement gives a person the right to sell. The first line in the, in the, in the agreement says, to this company or its assignees, meaning that the next day you could sell to somebody. I have to look out for the people of Bastrop. I have no access to drive. But as long as I'm here, I'm gonna make sure that we research every possibility. That's why Mr. Mr. Doyle gave the Utilities Commission a, a, a presentation. We have a great chairman, Mr. Richard Patrick, whose quality, and we've got quality people on there. I didn't attend the meeting on purpose, because I want them to, to make their recommendations without any undue influence. So, don't misquote me, and I'm not gonna let you do that. I said, what, hold it, what, hold it, hold it, please. I said that if we drop right now, I did a linear regression on population. You should look at the twenty-ten population and the twenty-fifteen and sixteen. If we do a linear regression, and I did, I went to my computer and I said, let's do a linear regression on population. We'll have ten thousand and one person. That's my, that's my progression. Now, people, because of the school system, we've lost five hundred kids in the last two years to other schools. People are moving away and running from Bastrop for reasons. Okay? Now, if we drop below ten thousand, say we're at nine thousand five hundred, let's just say hypothetically, then I would be remiss and would not have done my, my duty, my fiduciary duty, to look out for the people of Bastrop and say, this is what's possible. So, uh, for you to, to come here and make unresearched, uh, uh, comments, uh, I'm appalled, uh, because you're, 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 you know, we should be committed to, uh, rubber stamp things. You asking me rubber stamp this rubber. I'm not a rubber stamper. I'm a researcher. And I'm gonna make sure that the, that the rural water company comes and visit with the Utilities Commission. You're welcome to city and yourself. Uh, I'm gonna make sure that they hear from USDA. I'm gonna, I got a letter right here from the Census Bureau. I'm asking them to come, asking them to come and present and talk about projections, and then USDA. There's all kind of things from hostile takeovers, which have no intent, and a rubber stamp. There's public-private partnerships. There's a whole range of things. And I'm gonna make sure that this Utilities Commission knows all of the, the range of things that's possible. So that's my duty, and nothing's gonna stop me from doing that. But go ahead.
All right. And I understand your comments that you made. If we, if we fail below ten thousand, I'm here to discuss the water company. What I was asking was, if our population is declining, like you just said, according to what you.
It, it, no, according to the census.
According to the census.
Somebody Google it, please.
Why would we want to have another park for a population?
That's.
That is not rising, but slowing.
Mayor, try to answer that one, one sentence.
No, I want to finish, cause you, you tend to go on, and I just want to finish this up if you don't mind. All I'm asking is that you really reconsider this, because it's gonna take maintenance.
Well, this was.
It's gonna take tax dollars, whether it might not be right up front, because I don't know how you're gonna purchase it. It's gonna take tax dollars. It's gonna take manpower to maintain it. And I just feel like a park is not the place for it. I also feel like those children or whoever you're gonna put in that park, you, you're gonna have to have EPA come in, look at all that. There's a lot of expenses that's gonna come to the city.
We, we, we got that covered. We got that covered, ma'am.
Maintain what you have. If you can't maintain what you have, you're, you're in a situation, why do more? I was always taught, take care of what you have, then you can expand. Not expand and not take care of what you have. And really, that's all I have to say.
Well, thank you. Ms. Hendrix, let me, let me indulge and, and answer a couple of your questions, because I hate for you to give misinformation and along with. and along with mixed with some comments and stuff. But let me state, the National Park Service has come in here and studied, and helped us with the study. They're gonna come back ju, uh, January twenty-second or twenty-third. It'll be in the paper, it was already in the paper when they're coming back. Uh, that would be a central park. So that when you have things on the square and have to stop traffic on two major US highways, it's dangerous. And it holds up traffic forever. We could have an amphitheater, Ruston's got one, why can't we have one? An amphitheater, I'm seeking grants to do this. I'm not trying to spend any of our money. So, I wish that you guys would come and take the time and come sit and talk with me, my office is always open. But before you come and make assumptions, the city of Bastrop, and I'm glad you, uh, commented on the man that I hired to, to run, uh, public works. Mr. Gray is capable. Mr. Gray says that that park is a no ma, almost a no maintenance park. The, the park service, the National Park Service disagrees with you. And when people come here for reunions in, in July, the Fourth of July, and they come, and there's not a single walking trail in Bastrop. There's not a single place where you can go and exercise, there's no parastations. I'm gonna change that. I campaigned on it, the people deserve it, we deserve a central park. We're gonna do Smith-Wilson Park, we're gonna get grant money. Rudy Macklin, call me today with the governor's office, okay? He's coming up here. And we have that covered. So, please don't be a naysayer before you find out all the facts. I, I, I don't like naysayers that, I, I do like, I'm, I'm just saying I don't like people. But I don't like it when naysayers with no information come in a public forum that's televised and give out misinformation that, and without asking, "How do you intend to do this? What's the nature of the park?" The park will be an amphitheater like they have on Mississippi Street in Ruston. Right on the track, there's an amphitheater where they have events. We don't have one. New York City has a central park, why not Bastrop have a central park? We can, these are low maintenance things, that's why the National Park Service is giving us free engineering to do no maintenance, almost no maintenance items. Now, I can't help what other minis, administrations have not been efficient in doing. We're gonna be more efficient than any administration in the history of the city.
Well, Mayor, I will say this. I just heard about this today. If we had known about it before today, maybe I could've done my homework.
Yes, ma'am.
That this is what you were planning on doing. I'm saying, from what I see, what I've experienced as a businessperson.
Yes, ma'am.
And all I know is, I see dollar signs, and nothing was explained, nothing's been put in the paper, except I just heard it, that this is what your plans were. I'm here to say that as far, as a business owner and a citizen, we're looking at, we already have probably a deficit. I do not want, I don't, I just want, I know y'all got other things to do.
We do.
I just wanted to have it as a comment in, by the council to think on it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Gray, the comment was about the intent, your intent to build a park right here? Do you, in your opinion, does, will it park the way the National Park Service, did you meet with the National Park Service representative out of Atlanta? You had him in here for a whole day, is that correct? Did you take in every park?
Nine parks that we are, have to take care of.
Yes, and do you have a plan for all parks?
Yes, we do, we, we do, we are, we're making a lot more active.
Yeah. Do you, do you currently have a walking trail?
No, we don't.
Uh, aren't, isn't it your plan to take the two hundred and twenty tons of asphalt that we have, as we do our street program, and rejuvenate that and make walking trails in our parks? So that when people come home for, for reunions, they can walk without going to the industrial park, which is dark right now when they're out there, those ladies are out there by themselves. You wanna put an end to that, don't you? And there's no safer place than right here next to the police station in the... In East Madison, yes, Smith-Wilson, thank you. I wish people would, that we have an open door policy, our door is open, and I'll entertain anyone in that office. So, before you come up here, please, and give misinformation, please come see us and talk with us, because this is gonna be on YouTube, and we don't want people getting misinformation, and I refuse, I will not be misquoted. I'm not that kind of person. So, and I stand behind every word that I say. So, I've been misquoted here by Ms. Thompson, and I've been misquoted. Uh, and I'm just, I'm not one to worry about perception.
Scott, let me see, is this not gonna happen right now?
Yeah.
This is a long-term...
It's a long-term thing. And, and all we were asking for, the, the gentleman who bought, well, let, let's just go on, let's go on. Okay, item number one, no, I'm just kidding, of course. Uh...
Five.
Um, four. Five, uh, Councilman, uh, Chair of, uh, uh, Finance Committee, Mr. Shaw.
Well, we got the minute, do the minutes first.
I'm sorry, approval. Okay, uh, minutes of the, uh...
Mr. Bradford.
Uh, the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of December fourteenth.
Yeah, Mr. Bradford.
Where?
Are you still, you can really come in?
Oh, I thought you wanted agenda, you wanna come in and talk?
I, I, I'd like to come in, but the other people are...
Oh, go ahead, come on, hurry up.
No, I don't want to misquote you.
Come on, please don't, Charles Henry. You see, his name is Charles Henry, and mine's Henry Charles, so we have this, this thing.
Scott, I just want to see, um, number of eighteen...
Go ahead, Mr. ...
Purchase of, my first question, who is due to, I didn't announce that, somebody, who are due to LLC? Somebody help me.
You mean total one?
Yeah, total one, who are, who are those people?
Are you asking, are you asking the question, now, please, don't try to tell who they are.
No, I'm asking you...
I saw you ask, okay, I will, I will answer that. A group of gentlemen, God fearing gentlemen, total T O D A is be ruled for thanks. One is signifying God, so that says, "Thank God, thank the one, thank God."
I wanna know the membership, I wanna know these...
Well, you've got to, hey, just, Miss, look, you went to the courthouse and pulled all the... You did.
I want you to tell, yeah, I don't wanna misquote you, I want you to tell...
Well, I don't have their names in front of me, why don't you pull their names?
I mean, you're on thousands and millions of dollars of business, you figure they have a name on it?
Why don't, I'm, 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 I do business with that duly, uh, represented, that, the guy who, the gentleman who's authorized to do their business.
Well, who is he?
Uh, Mr. Oswald, Tom Oswald.
Do you have authorization to do business on behalf of this LLC? Do you have an act, a, a resolution, when he comes through business with you?
Yes, I do have a business.
Bring someone to this council? Will we enter into lease with him? Have you been given an authorization?
Yes, sir, I checked that out, now, we checked all that out.
Do, do, answer my question, he didn't give you authorization?
Yes, he has.
Why wouldn't it have followed the lease?
Why wasn't it part of the, you went and found the lease file?
Yeah, I found the lease, too, yeah, I'm here, I'm charging you.
Okay, Charles Henry, uh, it's my understanding that the lease, that the resolution's in there, if it's not, we'll add it, Mr. Bradford.
If, no, 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 you gotta take me through the council, the council, see, stop letting the city by itself, bro.
Yeah, I would like to see.
Hold on one second, hold on.
The council had, wait, the council had the lease.
Some of them's here privately for you.
The council had the lease.
Now, council had, the council hadn't had the resolution, the council didn't get the lease until the day of last week, a hour. And I can assure you, Charles Henry Charles, that very few people here can pick up a lease in an hour and understand it clearly, other than Mr. ...
Yeah, 'cause, we don't wanna, we don't wanna rubber stamp it.
Because Mr. Pierre...
Finding the problems with the lease, Mr. Pierre.
Absolutely no problem with the lease.
Did they have a resolution to the lease?
What do you mean, a resolution to the...
A, a resolution authorizing Mr. Oswald to enter into a lease with the city of Bastrop. You seen the lease?
I'm not certain if it did or not.
Okay, well, you, you say, you said it's a good study, don't make that statement, because I didn't look in the, what's filed in the record, and it's not in there.
Excuse me, sir, the question that was posed to me, did I have any problem with the lease? Was there any problem with the lease? And I said, "No, there was no problem."
And I said, "Well," and then I asked you another question. Were, there's a, what does a resolution, shoot, what does a resolution attached to that lease authorize Mr. Oswald, or whatever his name is, to operate on behalf of that organization? That's my question.
Well, I don't, if you wanna know how, how corporations run...
No, I'm actually, I actually want to ask you, what's operating, they say, right, yes or no?
Well...
We're a lot, we, we, yes or no?
Mr. uh, Mr. Bradford, hold on, Mr. Bradford, well, well, first of all, I'm bending over backward, because in public meetings, you can't ask, or you can make comments. Comments are not to interrogate.
Well, let me go, yeah, we won't get into these parts. I wanna say it all, I like to say it decently all.
Yeah, I've indulged you, uh, to the point.
Okay.
Uh, I've indulged you beyond. But we are con, we are confident in what we're doing, if you got a problem, file some kind of action against us, okay?
Okay, it, it's coming.
I'm sure it is.
Okay, I know you do.
It's like the buttons.
Well, anyway, you, you say, anyway, I, I would like to make a comment. We gotta stop the city of Bastrop in the autumn, this, this is coming. Got to stop entering into agreement with people we don't know who they are.
Talk in, talk in the microphone, Mr. ...
That we do not know who they are, wha, what they're fin, that's worth, uh, who behind this LLC? As you, a LLC can consist of anyone. They could have members, they could have membership. We could be dealing with anyone, if we do not know who they are.
May I ask you a question, Mr. ...
Sure, sure, please.
Did this LLC deal with International Paper Company?
Yes.
An multi-billion dollar company?
Yes.
Do you think that...
They got International Paper Company for ten dollars?
No, but I'm saying, do you think that IP had, do you think that IP had lawyers to make sure...
Yeah, but I'm gonna dump that toxin in this community, and you out the nation, I guess I'd be there.
Take the microphone.
You asked me a question, and I answered. Yes, I'd be there, do, and, and by the way, they're doing it, all over America.
For your information, Mr. Mr. Bradford, on the day, on the day that the sale was made, myself and th, and two staff members, Ms. Kennedy, and the sale of IP, on the day that it was made, I took the liberty to, Mr. Pierre arranged a meeting with me, with the Secretary of, of, uh, DEQ, uh, Secretary Brown. Is that true, Mr. Pierre?
That's correct, sir.
And on that day...
I filed a complaint with DEQ, they know nothing about this transaction of International Paper Company. So, here's, here's the census report, right?
Mr. Bradford, on the day it happened, Secretary, we're listening, Secretary Brown, if Chastity or Ms. 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 uh, Lenore were here tonight, I would have them pull their notes from the meeting. On the day that IP happened, we, they pulled the top-level people, Secretary Brown did, he and Mr. Pierre are, are, are well acquainted and, and friends, and I appreciate Mr. Pierre for having that connection. We met with the top staff, and I asked, "Let's look in the record and let's see what properties of IP," and I don't have time to go through the whole conversation.
Okay.
But, but DEQ, we met, and we got the Monroe Office in, which monitored this, and Mr. Shaw is a former executive at IP. And I, I have him, he advises me, I call him... Quite a bit, don't I, Mr. Shaw? Don't I call you quite?
As related to IP.
Yes, related to IP, I do, I do, ev, everything IP, don't I, basically give you a call?
I hope so.
Yes, I do. Yes, I do.
But, but, Scott, I, I...
Well, I'm saying, we're not doing this ill advisement. We had a meeting with, on the day of, and I asked for, for, yeah, yes, but, but see, I'm not gonna let people come up here and make a lot of...
I gotta talk to you.
You know, a lot of noise, and, and, uh, and false statements, and mislead the public.
What did, what did...
You can't interrogate, go ahead.
What did they purchase IP for, tell me about it?
That's not important to me, I don't care if it was given to them.
Oh, 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 oh.
Well, look, just make this...
Can you, can you tell me?
I'm not talking to you, let me address the council.
Yeah, how much was the purchase for?
Let me address the council.
It doesn't matter, Mr. Mr., please, you're...
He can answer the question, Ms. Scott.
I'm indulged.
How much was, I can ask him a question, how much was the purchase for?
Ten dollars. Here's the document, and if I make a further presentation, I would definitely show you the grand...
One of the owners is here tonight, but I'm not gonna ask him to come up with...
Well, we don't know who the owners are, all of us do.
Well, one of the owners is here, but I will not undignify him. Go on and finish your comments, Mr. ...
Yeah, yeah, and let me ask you one, Scott, for...
No, you don't get a chance to ask questions, just make your comments.
Okay, let me make one upcoming.
Make your comments. I tried to indulge you.
Item nineteen.
I tried to...
Then, I, I'm gonna like to make a comment to Mr. Scott. Mr. Scott called me a couple of days after Christmas, and I asked him this very question, had, what was the amount of IP been sold for? He said, "Oh, Brad," and I said, "Ten dollars," and he said, "Oh, Brad, that's just a rumor in the life of you."
I didn't, I don't think I said...
And, hold on, let me, let me finish you, Mr. Scott, because you make a place both sides...
I hadn't, I hadn't seen, I didn't care.
Yeah, you can't see, because you said you was there the day of the sale, I can accept him for that shit.
No, I said I was in Baton Rouge on the day of the sale.
Oh, 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 Baton Rouge, but you don't, you don't care.
I don't care if IP...
You said they come in and give ten dollars for a hundred and fifty, let me, let me make a comment. If IP come in and give a hundred, if I can give a hundred fifty dollars for a hundred and fifty acres of land, and I, we lose tax and revenue, and our property value go down, he don't care.
Mr. Bradford, thank you for your time, thank you for your time.
And I'm coming back.
That's fine, you're welcome at any meeting. You're welcome at any meeting.
Don't grandstand, man, I ain't...
Any, any other, uh, public comments? Any other public comments? I'll make this comment, I thank God for those men who are trying to work with the city to put this, all of this property, every bit of it, back in production. And they, they are working with the city, they're working with me, the mayor and the administration. I am the chief executive officer, and they are working with me, and I thank God for them. And, uh, and, uh, that's it. Uh, Finance Committee report?
No, no, let's do the approval of them.
Approval of minutes, thank you, I'm sorry.
I move we accept the minutes.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Shaw, seconded by Councilman Locke, that we accept the minutes of the meeting held on December fourteen, twenty seventeen. All in, uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
All opposed, the eyes have it, uh, minutes are approved. Uh, Finance Committee report, Resolution eighteen dash eighteen fifty-one, building claims for the month of December, Councilman Shaw, December twenty seventeen, Councilman Shaw.
Yes, Mayor, uh, we have reviewed, the, uh, council had reviewed the, uh, the bills and claims report for the month of December twenty seventeen, and we recommend that we approve them. I make a motion, we approve them.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Shaw, seconded by Councilman Locke, that we approve the minutes of the meeting of December fourteen, twenty seventeen. Are they in the discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
All opposed? Their, their minutes are... Resolution eighteen, eighteen fifty-one is adopted. Item seven, uh, December twenty seventeen revenue and expense report.
I move that we accept the report, Lord.
Okay?
You'll have a second.
Second.
Wait, um, Amanda, Amanda's gonna...
Mayor, this is basically, it's, it's our revenue...
Can you continue, Mike?
This is basically our revenue and expense report, monthly, that we give out. The, um, department has get this, and they signed for it. The legislative auditor decided they, well, they wanted this to be noted to where it is given to y'all, and it is on file, that they can see that it is given out.
Okay, so...
We got, we got a motion and second.
Motion by Councilman...
That's just a report, I don't think we have...
You don't, you don't...
Do we have, do we have, okay, all right.
That's just a report, all right.
All right. Uh, Ms. Haynes, uh, uh, Hill and anything? Ms. Haynes, we apologize for keeping you so long, please.
I'm Cindy Haynes from Hillings England Company, I performed the annual audit for the city of Bastrop for the fiscal year ending June thirty, twenty seventeen. And I have some graphs and charts that quickly summarize the activity for the city for that fiscal year. The first one deals strictly with the general fund, doesn't include the sales tax fund or any of the other funds. It's strictly the general fund, which is basically the operating fund of the city. We had eleven million dollars' worth of revenues, and I've made this statement for several years. The city of Bastrop is run on a ten or eleven million-dollar budget for several years, so, um, no major revenue increases or whatever. But you'll notice from the graph that the majority of our money comes from taxes. Eighty million of the eleven million comes from taxes. Uh, the next, uh, significant portion is from intergovernmental, and that would be any money from the state, uh, beer taxes, con, or grants, um, anything like that. Is this the right one?
Ain't dollars of mine, ain't, I don't take none of it.
Okay, and then we'll look at those taxes that we talked about, the eight million dollars in taxes, and this is how they're broken down. Here you can see that sixty percent of the taxes come from sales tax, thirty-six percent from ad valorem, and four percent from grocery sales tax. Now, these numbers, I mean, I've got numbers here in front of me, and you'll see that these percentages have remained the same for thirty-one years, varying one or two percentage points from one to the other. Okay, next we'll look at...
Ms. Sandy, is that, uh, ad valorem tax, is that thirty-six percent?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay.
And that's property tax, right, mister?
Yes, yes.
Take, technology's good when it works, huh?
Yes, it is, it's cool.
Get some batteries, we'll charge it up.
Okay, Rick, go live on, please. Okay, now I'm gonna look at the expenditures. We expended twelve million dollars, and the majority of that was spent in the fire department, followed next by the general, which that would be, uh, the administrative offices here in, in City Hall, and then next in line would be the police department.
Do the fire department normally be like that?
Yes, yes, and the main reason is because of the retirement.
Retire.
Right.
Compared to everybody else.
Right.
Okay. Okay, alright, here we've done the actual expenditures versus the budgeted expenditures, which needs to say, you can tell we budgeted eleven million, but only spent ten million. Now, in the general government, you will see that the budget was a lot more than what we actually spent. The reason being, we had, uh, projected some expenditures out of the airport with some of the grants and stuff that we didn't actually do for the year. But that's okay, we spent less than we projected. As long as you have less than a five percent variance, unfavorable variance, there's, there's no problem as far as reporting to the Leslie Box.
Yep.
Okay, here we do a three-year comparison, and you'll be able to see here again, the fire, see, it's always a little bit higher than, than all the others, especially compared to the police. The other street department change relatively unchanged, the sewer fluctuates a little bit, but that's because of the sewer projects that we have. Some years we have a project, some years we don't. Uh, recreation and all others is as all the other public works departments, cemetery building maintenance, um, et cetera. Okay, now, just some general highlights, anybody have any questions on that? Like I said, it's pretty much the same from year to year, the, the percentages and everything are within one or two of each other.
Can you email me a copy of your powerpoint so I can distribute it to all the councilmen?
They should have a copy.
We got it, we got it.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
We got it, thanks.
Okay, and you should have in your packet a copy of the audit report.
We do.
And I know you probably just got it in the last day or two, so if you-
It's not enough time to go through it.
Yeah, have time to go through it.
We didn't.
It's, it's-
We just got it last night, so-
Five minutes, so, when you have time to read through it or whatever, uh, you have questions or need to discuss anything or whatever, get in touch with me. Miss Amanda knows how to get in touch with you.
I will.
But I'm just gonna kind of hit the highlights now. Um, a total of the city, now we're gonna talk about the general fund, sales tax fund, street fund, everything combined. The total assets at the end of twenty seventeen, June thirty, were twenty-eight million dollars, and for twenty sixteen, they were twenty-eight million dollars. Liberties were twenty thousand at the end of seventeen, twenty thousand for twenty sixteen. Uh, your debt position, which if you were in a private business, that would precipitate your bottom line, was almost eleven million at the end of seventeen, and was nine million at the end of sixteen. Our revenues for the year ending June thirty seventeen were thirteen million six, for twenty sixteen, it was thirteen million four. Your expenses for June thirty, twenty seventeen were twelve million two, for twenty sixteen, they were twelve million one.
That's a big, that's a bigger difference.
Right, right, right. Okay, um, the city did amend all its budgets, they did amend them to where we did not have any unfavorable variance of five percent or more. Uh, the major cap last year additions during the year were for construction projects. The main long-term liabilities we have, we still have some sewer revenue and refunding revenue bonds of four point four nine million dollars. Sales tax revenues, funds, the same amount.
Ms. Cindy, when does those ma- bonds mature?
Oh, I can't answer that, I have to get back with you on that.
So, what's the price on the sale tax? You said four point four million?
Both of those are four point four nine million that we owe, and then the compensated assets would accrue every year, like vacation, comp time, whatever. So, our total long-term debt is nine point one million dollars.
That was for seventeen?
Mm-hmm. But for the, for the current, or that, I said the current fiscal year, for the June thirty seventeen year, we didn't, we didn't take on any new long-term debt. All we're doing is servicing the previous debt.
Okay.
Now, each year we do that revenue anticipation note, that's a million dollars, but that's considered short-term, because you borrow it the same year and you pay it, and you pay it back, so it's not considered long-term.
Now, part of that would be in the new road overlay program that we got going right now, wouldn't it? Cause we got money.
Yes, yes, that's where your sales tax money-
But that's, that is, that is debt though, right?
Yes, yes, yes. So, next thing, you borrowed the money, and you're levying the sales tax to pay back those loans, but that way you can keep working.
Okay.
Exactly.
Okay, for the twenty eighteen budget, very little difference. Uh, really, the revenue increased only three percent, the expenditures were decreased less than one percent. That's in the general fund. The sewer use fee fund, the revenues were increased, uh, about two thousand dollars. But expenditures were decreased by three hundred eighty-seven thousand, and that's because of some projects that are not, you know, being completed, and we won't have any activity in. The sales tax fund, which is your street program, the revenues were increased only by five thousand dollars, the expenditures were decreased by one point three million, because again, we've done some road projects that we want, we, you know, want to have.
So, is it possible that we can get a printout of that?
This is in your bag.
I don't have it.
You don't have a bag?
It's bound in a clear, Miss Amanda, it's in a clear-
You can use this one, do you?
It has a clear front on it?
Oh, my name is-
Let me get the page. Let me get the page when she's on.
Yeah, and I can get with you, I mean, I, I noticed you jotting things down, but if you have questions, like where did you get this number from, or get with me, and I can tell you exactly what it is.
I will, I will.
Okay, and that pretty well, um, summarizes everything, just in general kind of overview. Like I said, I know y'all haven't had long enough to eat that digest or whatever, but-
Yeah.
Get with me with your questions.
It's gonna take more than twenty-four hours to go through this.
Well, that takes a lot longer, twenty-four hours to get it done.
Cause we not a rubber stampers.
Okay, anything else right now?
Thank you.
Okay, thank y'all so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, appreciate it.
This one we have a pitch on.
Mm-hmm.
I got, I got it.
He pitches it.
I got it.
Found it.
Thank you, mister, mister, uh, item nine, shelter report. As most of you know, the, um, the City of Bastrop, eighty, and, uh, housing people during these, these, uh, this eight-day cold spell that we had where the temperature dropped down in the mid-teens, mid-to-low teens. And, uh, I had asked, or missed, uh, Miss Candy, you called me, I think Wednesday morning, and asked if you were planning anything, you were the Baptist Church, I think, in Hollins. But we, uh, made a call to churches, several churches, and, uh, put it on, you know, put it on Facebook and different places that we were gonna try to seek out people who were living in abandoned houses and didn't have it as well, for fear that they would freeze to death and, and suffer, uh, greatly. So, I called Miss Goldman and asked her if, to maintain the integrity of the program, if the City of Bastrop could receive the funds, and she set up a sub-account, I believe. And, uh, the, the persons who contributed would write on their, on their memo of their check, went to shelter report, and Miss Amanda, uh, uh, and the clerk's office kept up with that, is that correct, Miss Amanda?
Yes, sir, we recited it in when they brought it.
And we, um, got donations of how much, Miss Amanda?
The total revenue was two thousand nine hundred forty-six dollars and te- seventeen cents.
Two thousand nine hundred forty-six dollars?
Seventeen cents.
Seventeen cents. What were the expenditures?
Total expenses was one thousand six hundred seventy-seven dollars and thirty-five cents.
Okay, and there's one expense that I believe we hadn't covered yet, and that's the, the fuel expense for the Saint John Missionary Baptist Church, Reverend Conley. They got the center where the head start was located, where the old OLHC school, and they were nice enough to lo- loan us their facility. And we took a, a photograph of the gas and electric meters at the beginning, and a photograph at the end, and we calculated that we had used four hundred and seven thousand cubic foot of natural gas. And the going rate is published by, by Atmos, fifty-two point, I mean, point five two one something, uh, fifty-two cents, uh, a thousand cubic feet. You mean mine's hadn't been on all this time?
Just now.
Well, thank you. I did that, and I thought it was on. Okay, thank you, sir. Well, the, the, um, the, the bottom line is, we, that calculated two hundred and twelve dollars and something, but then the electric was another, uh, matter of some dollars. So, one check that I think we're gonna write to Saint John on Tuesday is for three hundred dollars to cover the utilities, and that'll leave approximately how much in that account, Miss Amanda? Thank you.
Nine hundred, right now we have one thousand two hundred sixty-eight dollars eighty-two cents.
Okay, alright, and our accountant on the council, Mr. Green, has calculated that.
No, it was easy, nine hundred sixty-eight dollars.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Green. Uh, so, that's a report, and, and, um, no, you know, we didn't spend money. Uh, and, uh, we wanted to make sure that, that people are safe down there, cause, uh, if we had not, then, then that's- So, that's just a report, gentlemen, it doesn't require any action. We want the public to know that, that all donations were put in the city's account. It was a sub-account, and earmarked, and all of the receipts, you have all of the receipts, you have all of the receipts for food, and, and I think some underwear was bought, and some towels and things like that. The sheriff's department, the sheriff's department was good enough, homeland security supplied cots, and hopefully we will be able to recognize those people who came. There were many churches, uh, including your church, uh, councilman, who came, and even got Councilman Shaw down at cooking.
At Mount Chapel, we got Reverend Al.
It, it's, do we have someone else?
At Mount Chapel, we got them down there.
Oh, good, Mount Chapel, yeah. I mean, I could, we could read all, but we wanna recognize them in a formal way at another meeting. But we wanted to give that report, thank you for your contribution. And there were many churches who, who, uh, contributed. Every day there was a church responsible for the preparation of the food and the preparing, and we thank God, we thank the, the, uh, members of this community for such a strong response. It was, uh, it was wonderful. Um, but we will recognize those churches and, and contributors at a later council meeting in some special way. Uh, Mr. Tim Plumley of Service First Heating and System is not here. I'm gonna ask Mr. Gray to come up, if you can, Mr. Gray. We met with Mr. Plumley, but he had an emergency in Gina that he had to, uh, had to go to. And, uh, Service First has been the, the provider of, um, of taking care of the city's, uh, heat system. We have a plant in this building that's huge. Uh, Mr. Gray, um, bottom line, uh, okay, you see that leak right there over Mr. Pierre's head? You see those tile back there in the, over Miss Cindy Hendrick's head? Yeah, those are, nothing's gonna fall, Miss Hendricks. Those, um, leaks, um, uh, these, there are twenty-five units up there, they're called, they're variable air volumes. They control air, how much is let out, and there are many of them in this building. And they're, they're so old, the, the pipes, we have a chiller, and, uh, it circulates water through all of these. And it's had virtually not enough maintenance over the last, how many years, you say?
He been back as far as six years, uh, and one of the key things, the key words he showed me was neglect.
Yeah, neglect. So, I've got pictures of it, but I, we just wanted to make you aware. The, uh, boiler, the, uh, I think the boiler is, was a nineteen seventy-six model, so it's been here forty-one years probably. And the system is not in good shape. And we're talking about a lot of money. All of the, a lot of these need to be replaced, they can't get parts for them anymore, these exchanges. And that's not roof water leaking in the building, as some would think, that's not from the roof, that's from the, the heating and air conditioning system. So, we have cold water for air conditioning, and we have run hot water through these units for heat. And this was just, Mr. Gray was concerned, so I told Mr. Gray that, that, uh, that I would bring it to the council, and we need to have discussion about it, about a plan of attack. Mr. Plumley, uh, is gonna give us quotes and things on what they recommend us do, but this is an awareness, this is just for awareness, gentlemen. Just to get you aware. And Mr. Plumley, uh, Mr. Gray asked Mr. Plumley if he would come up here Tuesday and take two councilmen at a time to view Tuesday afternoon, about what time did you say?
Sit by at three, but we can make adjustments after.
So, so-
Five thirty, perfect for me.
Okay, so, only two councilmen at a time?
I'll have a, I'll have a problem of getting back with Isaac, we schedule.
Okay, for, for you?
For time.
Okay, alright, but can, can a couple of councilmen?
I'll tell at five thirty.
Okay, yeah.
I'll talk to Mr. Fred, uh, and Mr. Shaw, and after, he leave with you guys, you can meet with other two councilmen. And let them know, we have a very serious problem back there, uh, like I said, one of the key words he uses all day was-
Lack, yeah.
Yes.
Lack. Uh, he said he had been complaining about, uh, leakage back there. It's been six years, he know. And had nothing been done, it's a very serious problem back there.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Gray, can he be free Tuesday at five thirty?
I have to be, I'm gonna be here.
Okay, me, uh, myself and Mr. Locke, we can be free Tuesday at five thirty.
Okay, I would, it's pretty, you know, I would be too now.
Yeah.
But then, once he does two, he can do, he can take two more on a tour.
The problem is so serious, he said he can come up there anytime, and if there was a, uh, you wanna hear the first hand, I can set up another meeting so I can get two more councilmen.
Yeah, so Tuesday, him and I, we can, we can meet when, on Tuesday at five thirty.
Is it already Tuesday?
What'd you say now?
Would that be alright with you, cause Diden's a lot that he can be at Tuesday five, even after rush tomorrow. But we gonna have to act fast on this, it's nothing that we can drag our feet on now. It's kinda, uh, we took pictures of it, I have one picture I want, I would like you to show the councilman, is the one where the leakage at, and what's right next to it.
We, we don't wanna talk about that in this meeting, believe me. Yes, yes, we wouldn't want anyone running for the door trying to evacuate the building. Okay.
This is something that we, we got to get on right away, we can't drag our feet on, cause if we do, and this thing go out back here, he said it'd be ninety days before we can get air in the building here, anyhow.
Because if the chiller fails, a carrier would have to manufacture one, they just don't keep that stuff on the shelf. And we, if we don't hit these problems off and find some creative ways to get this done, we're gonna be in a lot of serious trouble later on. Thank you, Mr. Gray.
Let me ask, uh, Mr. Gray, does he think that he can modify this system, replace the whatever needs to be replaced, and still keep the same chiller?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
But, but a lot of these have to be replaced.
Yeah.
And, and, uh-
This tile right here, we replaced it last time I walked today.
Okay, uh, item eleven, Mr. Charles Bradford, please come forward, sir. Good evening, again, Mr. Bradford. Good evening, again, Mr. Bradford.
We're back to, anyway, the statement, they come in this time. We're back to the lease agreement that executed on December. We're back to the lease agreement that was executed on December.
You got your microphone?
We're back to the lease agreement that was executed on December twenty-first, two thousand seventeen, where the board of alternates, do you have, uh, I think I made a part of handout in your package, is that in your bag? Do you have it on?
Yes, sir.
Number three, Mr. Bradford?
Yeah, we never did find out who, told them how I pronounced it, excuse my tongue, but we never did get an answer who they were. We just had a group of business investors, and we gonna need our own, and, uh, investigate them on a plate, okay?
I thought you had the names.
Well, I have the name of the five different LLCs that joined together and came one LLC and made two to one, I do have the name, but as you look at, uh, LLC can consist of members, membership. That's why I made the statement here today, we do not know who we're dealing with. I think I see one person, I can recognize the name, that he on one, Mr. Messington, and then, let me ask this question, is any member of this council, uh, I'm here, a member of any of these LLCs? Are you a member or have a membership to it?
Which one?
No, sir.
All five of them, you have them there, they listed them. All five of them, in, uh, any of them.
No, sir.
Okay, okay, I don't want to see because we entering with mental, LLCs consist of membership, stop me, Mr. Pierre, I'm gonna get wrong. Uh, membership, and as well as members. They can live inside the city of Bass, or anywhere in the country, they can come from a foreign identity. We do not know who they are, that's why I asked the question, maybe one of them can give us some... This, this big investor, these men, you know, got so much money, finna come to save Bastrop. Okay, they finna come save Bastrop, international paper have plenty of money, and they failed not to save Bastrop. Okay, no one on the board, no one on the board is a member of these LLCs, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, okay, let, let's move on, because we'll never know who they are, 'cause it's hard to identify who a member, a membership in a LLC. Okay, otherwise, we could be dealing with any people in any part of the world. The premises that are located on Collin Lane, under number three, let's start a lease agreement, this facility can only be used for nonprofit events, is that correct? Uh, Mr. Turner, I mean, you, you say you started a lease, is that correct? I'm asking a question, what can these facilities be used for? Can you define the use of this lease, whether it means...
If I, if I can, when you referring to numbers, are you referring to numbers inside of the lease?
Yes, number inside of the lease, Mr. Pierre, I'm sorry, excuse me.
Okay, sure.
No, no, number three, could you kind of tell, tell the city, tell them, explain to the community what this property even gonna be used for?
Well, uh, the language says...
Yeah, the language, yeah.
It says premises shall be used and occupied solely for the purpose of the tenant conducting beneficial, non-profit, community activities in a reasonable, prudent, and lawful manner.
Only for non-profit events, in other words, would that be correct?
Yes, it was said, sir.
Would that be correct, though?
Beneficial, non-profit, community activities.
Other word, we can't use it for our own private use, that's with non-profit.
Wait, let, let me, give an example of what you're saying.
Okay, I'll use an example, like, for instance, you got an event coming up Saturday where you tutoring at this facility.
Free of charge.
Free of charge, not, okay, who are the organizations, I think Rose said the school board had nothing to do with it.
They refuse to, to, to participate in helping the kids get their ACT.
Okay, this event that you have in, you say it's non-profit, right?
Yes, sir, nobody's making a dime.
Oh, no one's making a dime, who paying the light bill and the gas bill and the manpower?
So, Pierre.
Now, let, let me state...
I'm asking a question, you say it's non-profit?
Hold on one second, let me state something. Mr. Bradford, we have, we have a fund that is used...
Who is we, beefy city?
The, the city has a fund. It's, it's a discretionary fund that the Charles McDonald, uh, Charles McDonald had the wisdom to put, uh, municipal buildings, uh, municipal building particularly, uh, in a fund that's, and this building qualifies for that same, that same thing.
What you're saying?
To promote, hold it, to promote tourism, you asked a question, right?
Okay, sure, sure.
Okay, to promote tourism, there's a hotel tax in Louisiana. And the tax, uh, generates money, you, if you went to one of our hotels, or hotel in Monroe, or New Orleans, or somewhere, uh, else in the state of Louisiana, if it's eleven percent here, you're gonna pay like fourteen percent, or an additional tax for staying in hotels. It goes to a fund, uh, that the city has discretion in. Uh, I'll give you an example, there are, we have a fee that we charge for the municipal center. And this building is, is co, co, under the same philosophy as the municipal center.
We can charge for this building?
Yes, sir, we can charge for the building.
How much of your organization, you're giving us free, uh, did, did you check with the board of councilmen, see that we wanna put this free bill?
We don't, hold, hold on, one second. When the mayor, the, the administration makes decision, Mayor Jones made decision, Mayor Oliver made decision, Mayor Hawkins made decisions on rental of the municipal center. Uh, for instance, there was a feeding, a lady feeds free, okay? She brings turkeys and things, well, she got the municipal center free, the city partners, and we have that latitude, sir, to partner, and the administration makes that decision.
Okay.
The mayor.
Okay.
Okay, makes that decision, and without needing the, uh, the council to micromanage what you're gonna charge, and, you know, when someone comes in and say, I wanna feed people for Thanksgiving, and I'm not gonna make any money. Mr. Green, have you done things beneficial, uh, at the municipal center and gotten some kind of break before, before you became a councilman?
Never.
Never, do you know of people that may have?
Tim, I gotta, well, we, we do a Christmas dinner, like, and, uh, the mayor normally let us do it for free.
Yeah, yeah, so this is nothing new, Mr. Bradford, and the city partners, it's, it's in the, it's in what cities do.
Okay, okay, okay.
And we have that latitude, sir.
Okay, okay, I...
This year, this year, that fund, uh, the city's been getting twenty-five thousand dollars a year in that fund for the municipal center. And it's to do things, fix up things, and do things, and, because, uh, the gov, the government wants tourism, uh, because tourism fills up hotels and have people eating at your restaurants, and they want events. It's just like when we rent a park, Mr. Bradford, and we have the Dixie youth softball team. Well, I don't think that Dixie youth pays enough to, to, uh, get our ball fields ready and do the, do the work that we do. Uh, this administration wants to be more efficient than any administration in the history of this town. And Mr. Gray, I think, has proven that, that we can take the same people, or, or less people, and get more done. Uh, that's what he's doing, thanks to, to the staff, that's the way we're gonna do things. And we're gonna take the latitude and do what's lawful, and this is lawful. We can do things to help people. Now, if you got a problem with kids getting in college, do you have a problem with what we're doing? Oh, I thought you had a problem with...
No, I don't have a problem with kids getting in college, I'm gonna get to that later. I just asked the question where, who pays the expense for the, the employee?
Naturally, the city.
Other words, to make it short, to help you out, is this in-kind from the, uh, in-kind contribution from the city?
Yeah, that, that small part of electricity.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kai, that, that's...
We don't have security guards.
We, 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 that's okay, we, we, good, good.
I got a key, I'm gonna open it up, and I'm gonna shut it.
Oh, okay.
No, no, no city workers will be there, uh, with me.
And you, I think it's, it's fine, Mr. Kai, let's move on, cause it's real time.
Go on, go on.
I, I, you answered the question, that's, that's, that's acceptable. We're in-kind city, next time, we get, get those guys, uh, do a little more work in our community, like the young lady spoke earlier, our grass and our dish, but anyway, we won't go there, we'll leave that alone. Let's talk about taxes on that facility. That particular taxes was purchased by two to one, and now we, in our lease agreement, number six, Mr. Pierre? Pierre, Pierre, number six, can we read that?
Pierre.
Pierre, please?
Uh, Ms...
Yeah, number six, you, you, I want, yeah, number six.
Mr. Bradford, you do know, I'm giving you a lot of latitude, to, to, to quiz and do an inquisition, um, I mean, you're...
I'm not gonna give my opportunity to speak to the council, I asked you to figure on the agenda.
Go ahead, go ahead, just keep going, just keep going, I'm telling you.
If you, if you move, I'm gonna move.
No, go ahead.
Well, I just, Mr. Pierre?
Essentially, it says the tenant, which is the city, is gonna pay the property taxes.
Who gonna pay the property tax? Do you know what the amount of taxes that would cost the city to, each year, on that property building? Do you know the amount?
Zero dollars.
Oh, you gotta pay the parish, ain't no zero dollars.
We're tax exempt, Mr. Bradford.
You gonna have to pay yourself, but you still have to pay the parish, they say, right, they say your lease, you'll be responsible.
Mr. Bradford, we don't pay the parish for taxes on this building.
You don't pay the taxes, we're zero-zed.
No, so we're exempt. Miss Amanda, do we pay the parish tax on this building?
Okay, well, great, then, thank you for the correction, that, that's what we're here to inquire, okay?
Well, you could've come to my office and got these questions answered.
When you lied to me after December, I was through with your office. When you told me, you remember, you told me, I, I called you, tried to make a pump with you, and you were insulting, but you have apologized yet, when you said the white folk got a rumor going, and I'm holding it, trying to get my hand.
No, I said that there was a rumor on Facebook, I said, I read, I didn't say white folks.
Yes, you did.
No, I didn't, no, I didn't. I said that there was a rumor on Facebook, and I responded to it, okay? I responded to it.
Okay, Mr. Kai.
Okay, they said, there's gonna be hotels on, or apartments on it, no, there won't be any apartments on the mill site.
No, I, I was asking about what's gonna be on, I asked you, did, or were you aware that, uh, this company...
No, I told you I wasn't aware, I told you I didn't know what they think.
They had purchased it for ten dollars, and you're responding to me on the telephone that the white folk had a rumor going on for ten dollars, Charlie, Charlie, you call me Charlie personally. I say, okay, bro.
Okay, that's fine.
But I was insulting, 'cause I was holding this in my hand.
If I did say it...
I, I was holding it in my hand, that's why I was so insulting, you owe me apology, I, I don't know if you get to tonight or not, but I'm not... Maybe I might come to your office.
Keep going, time, time.
Number seven, Mr. Pierre, please. It's, it's kind of late.
Responsible repair maintenance.
So, Pierre, let me get this right, the, the year that we, uh, leasing it, do Tudo still own it? So, who pays the taxes for their, their period of time?
The, the spirit, the latter in the spirit of the lease agreement is that the tenant will be responsible for those expenses.
Right, right, that's, there you go, that, that, thank you, Mr. uh, Green, that's what I'm...
Are you talking about during the lease period?
In the agreement, it says that the tenant will be responsible for the taxes.
Mr. Bradford, let me, let me make something clear. I'm not, I don't know who their tax advisors are, but I do know enough about business to know that, that you have to hold a piece of property for a year before you can get a tax advantage, and...
But they pay for ten dollars for it, Mr. Kai, why do we care when they get a tax advantage?
No, this is what you might not understand.
They stole it, or been donated, whatever.
No, listen, let me state this, okay, let me try to help you, let me try to help your understanding here. The building appraised for close to a million dollars.
Eight hundred and forty-nine thousand.
Eight hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. Now, this is what it means, that, yeah, it's worth that, it's a well-built building, we got the whole block.
Not based on the pictures I got, I see leaks in the ceiling, I took pictures the other day in it, you want me, do we want me to show you?
No, no, Mr. Bradford, please, please.
You say I run a rhyme.
The building is a well-built building, it's the best-built building that the city of Bastrop owns. Now, I'm not gonna debate here with you, because you, you, you are spending a lot of time. But, but we had the, I had the building inspected, and, uh, we're not buying a pig and a poke, okay? The building will be a technology and conference center.
Are we buying it, uh, being donated to us out of one year?
It's gonna be donated to us in, in one year.
Okay, but they can sell it right now if they get a buyer, right?
Well, we have...
According to your lease.
And, and if they do, that's their free will, sir.
Okay, but if we go there and maintain it, clean it up, and put all manpower, and put thousands of dollars in it, and then they turn around and sell it, hold on, hold on, you, I, I miss you.
You must, you know, we have a time limit.
Okay, well, well, please, will you listen, and let me make my presentation?
Go on, but you, keep going.
I just wanna say, if I'm understanding you right, if we purchase, I mean, if they decide to sell this property, uh, they say in September, they got, we got it to September, they decide to sell it in July to any person they like to in the world, and start not to donate it to us, and we didn't kept it, we didn't did the maintenance, we didn't did the cleaning, we didn't did manpower, we didn't cut all thirteen lots, okay?
Already cut, but go ahead.
Oh, 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 they haven't grown yet, but anyway, we didn't did over tens of thousands of dollars worth of maintenance on a building that a...
What did you get your tens of thousands for, from, we're not doing tens of thousands of maintenance.
Come on, come on, we got a leg, we got a leg, come on, Mr. Kai.
You're hypothetical, you're doing hypotheticals, we don't have time for hypotheticals. Go on, but you're just making all these loose cannon statements.
You say I do my research, and I didn't...
No, when you say tens of thousand, that ain't research, because you...
That tens of thousands of dollars manpower, over, right now, we're spending overtime in that building, cleaning it up, as we...
We haven't spent overtime.
Well, people are man grouping over there.
That's not overtime, that's not overtime, Mr. Bradford, you're not, Mr. Bradford, Mr. Bradford. I'm gonna ask you to sit down, unless you hurry up.
No, you want me to sit down?
You've, you've exceeded your time, you're preaching, Bishop, you're preaching.
Yeah, that's, amen.
Don't preach, just make your statement be concise, because you're going on with all these hypotheticals about tens of thousands of dollars, we doing this, we doing that, Mr. Bradford, Mr. Bradford. Listen, I'm the mayor, and I made these decisions, and if you got a problem with this, vote me out when the time comes, I may not even run. Well, before, vote me out before, do a re, whatever you wanna do.
Okay, I'm gonna come here to challenge you, Mr. Kai, I come here to talk to the council about this, believe me. It's not about you, it's not about Bradford, it's about this community, it ain't about me or you.
Mr. Bradford, just, just make your statement, but stop saying, uh, landy, grandy, sounds like tens... Hold it, wait, listen, you're saying tens of thousands, no, I'm not gonna let Mr. Bradford say and paint in people's minds, it's gonna cost us tens of thousands, wait, listen, listen, I'm not gonna do it, I'm not that person. Now, now, the council gets paid to sit up here once a month, okay? They get paid, just like I get paid.
And they run the city government too, Mr. Kai, not you. They make the decision...
They're legislators, they're legislators.
Okay, yeah.
They're the Congress, they're the, they're the Congress, and I'm the president, okay?
Oh.
I mean, if you wanna make the analogy of what their role is.
Okay, okay.
Okay, and their executive powers, Mr. Bradford, and that's what I'm... Go on, hurry up.
Please.
Please.
You, you, you're trying to throw me off of what I'm gonna get to.
No.
Okay, the other word, the question where, they can sell this particular location tomorrow, if they choose.
You established that, but keep going.
Okay, okay, well, okay, if, they gonna donate it to us.
You said if.
It, it's a praise, listen, let me go on, it a praise for, you, they gave you something, it praised for eight hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. Okay, you can believe in a good business person. Someone come along before this agree, leave, this tenant agreement that the city have with them in this league, and offer them some money, they're gonna accept it, and we just took that, and we've been used for a whole year. That's what I'm getting at, now, I'm gonna move on.
Well, let, let me address that, because I, I hate misinformation, just let me address that, and I'm gonna, no, I know you guys been harried, but I'm not gonna let this misinformation go without being answered, I'm not that person. And you may as well get used to it, I'm not that person. When someone gives out misinformation, I believe in correcting the information. Now, as I understand it, when a person gives something, then they can get a tax credit of almost a million dollars. That means that they can avoid paying taxes.
That's not, nothing to do with the question, I hate you with the tax rate.
Wait, listen, Mr. Bradford, you make, Mr. Bradford, just hold on.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
Nothing to do with it.
People who have means would love tax credits, why do you think this building down here, the school building, was turned into an apartment, tax credits? Why do you think people build, uh, housing complexes, tax credits, tax credits? We can make money, and now, rather than giving the money to the government, we got a tax credit that we can pay with. Mr. Bradford, I know it might be a stretch for you to get this, but let them do their business like they want to do it? If they decide to do a...
Don't do it to us!
Well, that's...
Don't do it to the city of Bass, they can do that.
Mr. Bradford, if you had won the mayor's office, you could make the decision, but you can't make it now.
No, I can't make it now, this, this government body, I'm gonna trust this government body, Mr. Kai.
Sir, sir, sir.
Don't let them, don't let them use this government body.
Now, you're trying to spook the council.
No, it's...
But we have a building, that's the best-built building, we're gonna use it, okay? As long as I'm mayor, I'm gonna fight for us having access, I'm gonna fight for us having the best parks in the, in the, in the state of Louisiana, of any city this size. I'm gonna fight for us to have the best facilities, and we're gonna do those. Now, if you had won the mayor's election, you would be making these decisions.
Oh, no, no, I wouldn't have been, know what I did, I made international, come here and clean it up.
But, but, that's if...
Well, I did, while I was supply company, that's what I...
Okay, Mr. Bradford, Mr. Bradford, you got one more, you got one more minute.
I may, I may not run, nevermind.
Mr. Bradford.
I would have made international, they wouldn't have done it to Tudo, they would have came here like they should have, and cleaned it up. You don't wanna hear the truth, brother.
Mr. Bradford.
You don't wanna hear the truth, Mr. Kai, you're grandstanding, brother.
We've indulged you, we've indulged you.
You asked me a question, you won't even let me answer.
What's, what's your question?
I say I would may, I would have made international, if I had to file a...
But you're not the mayor.
But you asked me to...
You're not the mayor. You're not the mayor. No, I said, if you were the mayor, you're not the mayor, Mr. Bradford, Mr. Bradford, please.
You arguing with yourself, and I'm not gonna argue with you.
Okay, well, Mr. Bradford.
Can I continue?
Go ahead, but, but go straight to the point, don't stop preaching, don't stop and start preaching.
We might have church night, hold on a minute.
You're supposed to address, you turn into the audience.
Okay, okay.
Trying to get amen, go ahead. Go on.
Okay, let's talk about the lease agreement, we, we talked of, uh, go on, Mr. Pierre, I got, I got one of them, Mr. Pierre, then I'm gonna move on to something here. Did you get a copy of the letter intent, you have a copy of the letter intent?
You asked me?
Yes, okay. And I, let me say, now, on this building that's been given to us, it's so kind of being given to us, we getting for a dollar, we also, in, in, on number sixteen, any improvement, we are responsible for, and we are, anything that we improve will remain the property of, what you calling, two, two, two? Two, two, two? Is that right, Mr.? Because you, number, number sixteen? Two to one, two to one.
Total, total one.
My, help me.
Toda's Hebrew for things.
Yeah, yeah, okay, okay.
Yeah, Toda.
If the city makes improvements, all improvements go to the.
Will, will remain the property of?
If, if we make improvement.
Sure, 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 please.
Thank you, Mr. Pierre.
Please, please.
This is analogous, I guess, for your information, to, uh, someone building a piece of property and putting it on a land that belongs to somebody else. The property's gonna belong to the land owner.
Mm-hmm.
When you have a lease, when you have a building and you lease the property, the property still belongs to the lessor.
Mm-hmm.
In this case, as in many businesses do, not just in city of Bastrop, but throughout this country, I'll give you a more recent example, State Farm did the same thing. When they left Monroe, they had the, the Mid-South Claim Center, that's set right there in the middle of Interstate twenty and one sixty-five. Oh, when they left, they donated that building to Louisiana Economic Partnership.
Mm-hmm.
Who eventually.
Which is part of the city, uh, Monroe, is that correct? The economic development, they, they quote, quote what, what city of Monroe?
No.
Okay, go ahead, I'm tired, excuse me.
What I'm saying is that businesses, when they leave, they don't wanna leave the building there, they wanna give it for purpose of future development. Oh, Louisiana Economic Partnership eventually sold it to the state, and then their other businesses that developed, start working call centers and things, and making their buildings. This is no different from what is done throughout this entire country.
Okay.
When a business leaves, and they leave buildings there, you know, if they sell the business, or if they sell the buildings, the buildings are normally given to the municipality, or given to some nonprofit organization for purposes of keeping it up and doing a good thing with it. In this particular case, the lease agreement that was signed by the mayor, which was authorized by his council in a resolution at last month's meeting, authorizing them to engage into that agreement with Total One, oh, was a standard lease agreement, and any standard lease agreement, the lessor is not gonna say, "I'm gonna let you lease this for a dollar, and I'm gonna pay the taxes on it," he's not gonna say, "I'm gonna let you lease this for a dollar, and I'm gonna be responsible for the maintenance," he essentially telling you, "I'm gonna let you lease it for a dollar, after the one-year period or whatever period of time, my intention is this, to give it to you," that's the purpose of the counterletter, which you referring to right here.
Okay, well, well, thank you, Mr. Pierre, for your clarification, and that, that, that's all good and daddie, but, but, but what I gotta say to that is, the first intention letter was the date of December the fifteenth, you got two of them there, the same good, earnest, two, 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 whoever they are.
May I, may I make a statement before you, I'm asking you if I can make a statement, Mr. Bradford, as though you're in charge of the meeting.
You're the mayor, I'm a, you're the.
Okay, what Mr. Bradford is, is, uh, is, is referring to, and he thinks he's got something.
I'm not there.
What he, what he's referring to is, when we talked with, uh, the management of the, the decision-makers, the, the group, uh, and, and we negotiated, and I expressed my desire to have certain IP properties. One was for the city, one was the building over there, which will be owned by the city in September, I have faith and confidence in that. And, and, uh, another piece of property.
What other piece of property since you got?
Right there, the, the old mill site.
The old mill site, what, what that consists of, since you have.
It's twenty-one acres, but we.
And, and, and any structure, a building on that?
There's a structure on the six acres in front, but not the thirteen acres.
Are we getting the structure?
No, no, sir, we're not getting the structure.
Just the six acres.
Thirteen from Cajun Street up to right here.
Okay, that's a thirteen acre.
Thirteen acres, that's what I want, because we need an Apple Theater, we need things.
Yeah, I heard you say.
Yeah, we need things that we don't have, and I want the best parks in the, in the country for a town this size. So the retirees would wanna come back here and bring.
And these good people wanna help to see their Bastrop, don't they? I, 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 that makes sense, they wanna help to see their Bastrop, but they get something, they file for ten dollars, and oh, here, they're gonna set it to us for a hundred and thirty thousand, though.
Hold on, Mr. Bradford, Mr. Bradford, Mr. Bradford, this is an option giving us the right to buy it.
Well, yeah, for a hundred and thirty thousand.
This council would have to buy, they would have to, they would have to do that, and I don't have to tell you all the plans and where the money might come from, there are sources, there's grants. There's all, do you understand, it's not time, this is, this is to introduce, to try, to get control of it.
You cannot lock this city into any misuse with Dr. Prove of the council.
We, we got sense enough to know that.
That right here, you brought this, gave them a day before last meeting, and gave them a, a letter intent with Martha Lutakine.
Oh, wait, let, let me, let me state, Bradford, Bradford, Bradford.
Then you go back after that, and get the thing changed to, to the center, and Dr. Prove of the council.
Just listen.
And, and got the same thing to make it look right on the.
No, just listen, Mr. Bradford, Mr. Bradford.
You're disrespecting these five gentlemen that represent our city as a whole.
Just calm down, calm down, you're gonna give yourself one of those things, just hold on.
I'm not gonna have things.
Hold it, 'cause I'm not gonna have one, but listen, let me explain to you what happened, Mr. Bradford. Mr. Oswald said to me, "We've never done one of anything like this," and I said, "Hey, you can save money if you, I'll call Steve Katz." And the school board does this all the time, they're just listening to your conspiracy theory.
No, ain't no conspiracy, call Mr. Pierre, that's what we pay you.
I'm talking, Mr. Bradford, just hold on, just hold on.
You're trying to escape.
I'm talking, just hold it, hold it, hold it. I asked, I said, "Well, you don't have to get a lawyer to go through all the research, because our school board has given away, uh, and, and, and released things for a dollar before, I'll call Steve Katz, and you can get a sample from the school board, and it'll save your attorney some time to start with the document." He said, "Mr. Oswald said, 'I know Steve Katz, Henry, I'll call him myself.'" And Mr. Katz provided some examples of where the school board had, had done those properties, and that's what that came from. When we had the, the, the intent letter, now, that letter was just a letter, not a part of the lease, let me make that clear, the council didn't vote on that letter. That letter was just saying, "Hey, I intend to do this."
That letter presented to the council at the last meeting.
Wait, listen, that letter was just an intent letter, and when you came, I gave out the wrong one that they had corrected, we had two, they had made that mistake, and I accidentally gave out the one that had the address, oh, the, they left the address of the school board property. Mr. Bradford, you don't have nothing here, Mr. Bradford, you don't have anything, I just hate to burst your bubble.
Bust my bubble, burst it, baby.
But you don't have anything, that was a clerical, wait, listen, there was a clerical error, and I called, I called, we called and said, "Hey, send us the corrected one, they're identical, and if you go back to the school board records, you'll find that same letter."
Mr. God, that's what I said earlier.
I'm just saying that's clerical error, clerical, there's no conspiracy, Mr. Bradford.
Okay, well, I.
There's no conspiracy.
I used the word conspiracy.
Wait, but you're implying, but you gotta hurry up, 'cause you're.
No, 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 I'm hurrying up, because what I said is, Mr. God.
Mr. Bradford.
You would've had enough, you would've had enough respect for the voting, the voting body of this city.
I think they, then y'all get the right.
Oh, oh, no, they, look, you attached this to it after they signed it.
Yeah.
See, the letter liked the, the day of.
Okay, okay, but this letter that reading December fifteenth, if it was modified and corrected, it should've shown that they modified and corrected by the Board of Altimas.
That wasn't part of what we voted on, Mr. Bradford.
We not gonna let you run this city by yourself.
Mr. Bradford, I'm not.
I'll be out to be here every month.
Well, thank you, Mr. Bradford.
Okay, we not gonna let you, you see, the five gentlemen right there, I respect them.
I know you respect them.
And I respect you too, but you not gonna undermine them and use those trickery things you got. Oh, okay, excuse me, sir, I'm a preacher, I'm sorry.
Mr. Bradford, Mr. Bradford, Mr. Bradford.
Thank you, thank you, Councilman, may I, I'm not trying to.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Chief.
Yeah.
Mr. God, we not gonna let you use.
Mr. Bradford, don't, don't preach, just, just state what you wanna state, and, 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 and sit down. State what you wanna state, you don't have to make a campaign speeches early for campaigning.
No, 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 campaign's over.
You'll have your chance, you got, you'll have your chance.
Mm, 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 I ain't running no more, God, I got a high calling for me, I gotta watch you this year.
That's fine, that's fine.
I got one other thing.
But, but, Mr. Bradford, you're looking for a conspiracy, there is none.
You keep using that word conspiracy, I haven't used that word conspiracy.
Because you have, you have.
Don't feel guilty, I haven't used that word conspiracy. I'm just saying, you give this councilman more respect, before you go signing documents, putting things in the record, respect Mr. Locke, respect Mr. Green, respect Mr. Shaw, respect Mr. Prater, respect, God, we voted them in, okay? And they, they'll, they'll make sure, they gonna, the thing gonna fall back on them, because this same lease that we're discuss, this same lease that we're discussing.
Mr. Bradford, Mr. Bradford, you can't, you can't do that, just state the, the facts, state your facts, we're not gonna let you preach all night.
Okay, well, the lease, the lease, the lease that's on file in the court office, do not have authorization from, uh.
Well, we, just don't note it, go ahead to the next point, make your points and.
Other word, I feel that these should, abortion should rescind that resolution.
Okay, well, we, your time is up.
Okay, okay, can I ask one more?
Your time is up, your time is up, your time is up.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, Master, thank you, Master.
Wait, your time is up, time is up, we've indulged you quite a while, yes.
Hey, I, I do have a comment I'd like to make. One is, for this building, we need to make sure we got guidelines for po, people who use this building, whether it be rental or what. We got, we, we don't have guidelines on this.
It's the same as the municipal center, that's what.
But I'm, I'm saying, though, our personnel don't know that, and I would appreciate if we make sure that they understand that.
We've had those discussions.
Also, the municipal center, though, people can come in and make money if they renting, right?
But they're not a for-profit, or, they're not a for-profit, if someone wants to give a dance at the municipal center, Mr. Green, uh, they're not a for-profit organization, we're not renting it to, uh, the, the Jiggle Lou nightclub, because their building is under construction, and then they gonna run it as, this is normal events, uh, just like they do any public building that's used for events. We also are using it for an incubator, if there's a business that wanna come to town, or if there's a, some people wanna come to town and have a board meeting, or have a meeting, the library is, have you seen the library, it's disgraceful. Well, we have it set up with a boardroom table just like that, that IP left, okay? That people can sit around a boardroom table and have, we can use it as an incubator, it's gonna be multi-use, we have guidelines, and they're gonna be the same as the municipal center. We got rooms in the back of the municipal center that hadn't been used, Mr. Gray's trying to do something to make those more attractive. We are on it, gentlemen, we're on it, we're not, we're not just flying by the seat of our pants, we are planning, we are working hard, we're working overtime. I think we might be the hardest-working administration ever in this Bastrop, I haven't had a day off, yet, not one. And, and, uh, we have an agenda, it's progress, like you've never seen before. Now, I know I'm taking you guys fast.
Real fast.
I know that, Mr. Prater, I know that.
You need to include us on the agenda, you can't take off by yourself, Mr. God.
Well, Mr. Prater, I'm willing to wake up. I'm willing to wake up at three AM, and I'm available twenty-four seven, I won't call you, you call me, and tell me how much more time you wanna spend with anything, and I'll spend the time, whether it's nine to ten at night, or five to six in the morning, I don't care. You know, I operate on polychronic time, not monochronic time.
But you have to quit assuming, you have never showed me the new park, and you want me to vote on it, I will not do it.
I was not asking you to vote on it, on, on buying it.
You gonna have to slow down, Mr. God, we all not, not as advanced as you are.
Mr. Prater, Mr. Prater.
Perception we have to keep, we have to answer to our constituents, we have to do that.
Okay, well, I, I'm just gonna say this to, to you gentlemen on the council, I'm available anytime, so don't expect me to call you, 'cause when I call you guys, you're busy a lot of times. So, I'm telling you that my number's three one eight six six nine four eight nine six, you call me, and I'll spend as much time on everything that we're trying to do. I know you believe that, Robert.
Well, I, I would like for you to, to not be so verbal about it.
Oh, yes, sir, okay.
Just keep coming, keep coming, we, we up here as a council to help with the things that we need to do in this city. And when you latch on to something, you just run with it.
I'm sorry, I, I'm going too fast, you guys.
We, we just.
Okay.
Mr. God, let, let me speak a minute.
Go ahead, Mr.
Uh, I guess what Mr. Bradford saying, and what a lot of other people wanna know, is it costing the city? Somebody said.
Which one, which one?
The building, that we're looking at, both of them, matter of fact, a hundred and thirty thousand for the land, and the building, the learning center, yes, it is costing the city.
Wait, 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 let's not lump it, what, what do you say is costing the city, the, the building?
The building?
Well, we hadn't done the land yet, but let's just deal with the building.
It's costing the city.
Okay, now, now, Mr., you, you have an entrepreneurial spirit, you've operated businesses, right?
Yes.
Well, I'm an entrepreneur, my last paycheck came from IBM in eighteen seventy-six, okay? Uh, I'm an entrepreneur, and the only way entrepreneurs stay alive is to, is to make sure you got more revenue coming in than you're spending. And I did a cost analysis of that building, okay? And we can, we can actually make money off of it beyond the utilities and mopping the floor, because it is very well-built, I want you to go see it. It is the best-built building, IP didn't spare any expense, and I've got an IP man right here. He knows that that training facility is a top-notch building, maybe the best-built building in Bastrop, and for us to be stupid enough to say, "We don't want it," that is, that would be an idiot to say that we don't want that building.
Basically saying that you.
Let me, let me speak, I, I didn't get through.
No, you voted, everybody voted for it, so I'm not talking about you all.
We, we're not sitting up here and saying that we wanna get rid of the building, we, the building's a nice building, well-built, I, I concur for that.
It is well-built.
But, we got to have guidelines, we got to make sure everybody understand, 'cause what happens, you got ACT over there, well, first off, the, you know, the school board don't wanna mix, and I agree, we don't need.
Wait, 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 Robert, let me state something, 'cause you said that, okay? Now, Bastrop High School had one million, three hundred thousand dollars in scholarships in twenty sixteen. The school board banned me from doing pre-ACT over there, four members, without a meeting, they broke the law, okay? They had a meeting and agreed to this, and ordered the superintendent, uh, from my understanding, uh, to tell the principal, he's not to come over there for any reason, to help kids, okay? Now, in last year, from twenty sixteen, a million three in scholarships. Twenty seventeen, two hundred and nineteen thousand dollars, a million-dollar drop in scholarships at Bastrop High, don't take my word for it, call the guidance councils, call the people who put together the, the awards program, awards program was five minutes last year, it's killing us, it's killing economic development. Our kids can't go to a four-year college, and if you got, I campaigned and told people that I was running, and I was gonna do a town-to-gown program to make sure every kid that wanted to graduate, could graduate, go to a four-year college, to Grambling, if they want to, to Southern, or to Tech, or to ULM, and get in. Now, the school system, the school board is not doing their job, and I can't say it's their responsibility, it's all of our responsibility. We can't, we can't let the school board kill us, and they're killing us, they're killing economic development. We have Morehouse, that's a, that's an F school, Morehouse Junior High, it dropped from a thirty-seven to a twenty-five this year. A thirty-seven F, it takes a fifty to be a, a D, and it's an F for six straight years, and I'm not gonna sit by and say, "Old school board." You know, it's my opinion, we need a new school board, but go ahead.
I'm just saying, that's something you could work out with the school board.
No, sir, I can't, I begged Mr. Hickson, I begged him, let, let us help, right? I begged Mr., I begged Ms. Dow, I begged Mr. Hickson, I begged, uh, Ms. Thompson, I begged, uh, begged, uh, the other person, Mr. Walls, I begged those four. Okay, and I've held out all the branches, I've done everything that I know how to do, and I'm not gonna let these kids, these Bastrop High kids, that's in yours district, not gonna let these kids, these Basterd High kids, that's in yours district, every one of yours district have these kids. And, 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 and I thank God for the lady who spent a thousand dollars to buy this box of calculators, and she lives in Chicago.
And I'm not, I'm not saying that's bad, that's...
Well, well, look, put me in jail for using the building, file charges against me for using the building to help these kids, I don't care. I don't care. These kids are gonna come and they're gonna get the ACT skill, they're going to, they're going to go to college, they get to qualify for the college of their choice. Only two Basterd High athletes, only two Basterd High football players have the ACT score to qualify for a D1 college.
I'm saying that the city has other priorities.
I'm doing those, wait, 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 Robert, I'm doing the job. Don't imply that I'm not doing...
Eric, can I finish?
Yeah, but I'm do- don't imply that I'm not doing the ma- that I'm, wait, wait, don't imply that I'm letting something else go. Chief is there, chief, the count, the fire chief, and the chief of police is right here. And they know that I'm, I'm involved more than they probably want me to be. But we are, we're having meeting after meeting, we're going to a two-fire rating, we had meetings today, we are, we are, we, we dedicated a new fire trainings facility, we, we're working every day on everything. So, don't imply that I'm taking time out and letting something that the mayor should do. I work sixteen, eighteen hours a day, and I put in more time, I've never charged the city a dime for travel, I go at my own expense, I've never charged the city a dime except when moving to LMA, okay? Where they wrote me a check, they wrote all of us a check for hotel. But I've spent my money going places, to Mississippi and to Alabama, talking to, to people involved in, 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 where they gonna put the Mazda Toyota plant, is it gonna be in West Mississippi, can we get, you know, we're trying to clean up the garment plant, Mayor Tubbs, I mean, uh, uh, Sheriff Tubbs has agreed to help us clean out that garment plant, K King can verify that. We're gonna clean that place up, we got some, some knockers, we've got some ideas that are revolutionary, and I'm doing the mayor's job. And if I wanna take extra time and get these kids some high ACT scores and some free tuition, nothing's gonna stop me from doing that. So, the implication that I'm not doing the mayor's job is, uh, is just not true. I spend more time doing it, but go on with your comments, sir.
Okay, but did I say you weren't doing the job?
No, sir.
Okay, now, let me speak now.
I didn't say you weren't doing the job, I said that's priorities.
The priority, priority one is running the city, okay? But I can walk and chew bubble gum at the same time, I can do this too.
Okay, make a long story short, the city want to know is the building costing us anything, but let me finish now. Yes, it is costing us something. Matter of fact, learning from you, I did my own research, I called Pam Daniels. I said, "Pam, I said, what is the, uh, other taxes, the taxes that are being paid on that property?" She said, "Mr. Moore," she said, "we receive four thousand dollars a year from the parish, we receive thirty-nine, thirty-one, uh, for the city." I said, "What about the land behind, uh, the city?" She said, "You receive twenty-two, forty for the parish, seventeen, seventy-two for the city." In other words, make a long story short, combined is eleven thousand, nine hundred and forty-three dollars revenue that we have lost. Anytime that you take on a...
Wait, wait, go ahead, go ahead.
Anytime you take on a building, that comes off the tax roll, so yeah, two, two to one, they did give us a building, but sometimes gifts cost, and it's costing us in the long run. Now, hold up, I got another question. Have you checked on the fire, how much, uh, insurance for the fire costs? Have you checked on how much the utility's gonna run? Have you checked on liability insurance for what you gonna, I'm just asking, have you, have you not?
Yes, I have.
Okay, what, what, what?
Yes, we ran those, I don't have them, Ms. Goldman, we, we...
I got some numbers for you.
No, no, we've already done it, but go ahead, if you want...
Just on the average, I got some numbers.
Go on, go on with your numbers, go on with your numbers.
I called Horizon Insurance out of my roots, I just told them, "Just give me average, it ain't gotta be perfect." They said, "Mr. Moore, for your fire and, and, uh, liability insurance, you just, on the, uh, low side, you're looking at six to about ten thousand a year." I said, "What about utilities?" Uh, I did that my own, so I'm just doing a breakdown, average a thousand dollars a month, because we got to pay for lights, gas, we got to pay for the telephone and all that, that's, that'll run about twelve thousand a year. So, you see what I'm saying? So, we, we, we losing, but I know that in the end, that we gonna make a profit.
What's your total, what's your total amount that you think it costs to operate?
Just guessing, you're looking at twenty-two, uh, probably about thirty, about thirty thousand dollars.
So, so, let me get this straight, so you're saying that, that you've got a eight-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand-dollar building, that, uh, barring any sale or change of mind or any of those things, that you wouldn't take the risk? You wouldn't take a twenty-two thousand dollar risk, now, just, just answer, you wouldn't take a twenty-two thousand dollar risk, especially when you can make money, you can generate revenue through leasing it out. I have a young lady from California that, that wants to rent it out for a twenty-year red- wedding, uh, reception, for several hundred dollars, probably five hundred dollars, okay? Uh, people will make money be, be in, given security, and you're telling me that you, Councilman Moore, someone's gonna give you an eight-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand-dollar piece of property, and you think that the risk is too great? I thought you were an entrepreneur.
Well, well, fair, I'm just...
No, 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 you think that the risk...
What do I need ice for in Alaska?
I don't get to...
Do I need ice in Alaska? My point is, what we need to do, like Shaw was saying, what we need to do, before we take on these things, let's go ahead and count the cost still, that's all I'm saying. I'm not saying it's not a bad idea.
You've already voted to accept it, Mr...
I just admit to that.
Yeah, you voted to accept it. I already, I counted up the cost, Ms. Goldman and I went over the numbers, okay? We, I, I didn't just do this, but I also counted up the revenue potential, and I also counted up the fact that we'll have two buildings, sometimes to rent out the municipal center, it's too large for events.
But what's the revenue you estimated for the year?
What's the revenue I estimated for the year? It can be... It can be, no, I'm just, I'm just trying to be, I'm trying to be conservative. It can, it can generate as much, even if it doesn't, I'm gonna say just like, just like the Hebrew boy said, when they said, "My God can deliver me from the fire," but even if it doesn't, okay? Even if it doesn't, even if we don't make a dime, Mr. Moore, even if we lose, as you put it, lose, I call it an investment, even if we lose twenty-three, twenty-two thousand dollars, and we end up with a million-dollar piece of property, bas- basically, if you round it, it's a million dollars. I think it's a good risk.
Mr. Cotton, like you say, I am an entrepreneur, but land is only worth what somebody is willing to pay for. We may have an eight-hundred thousand dollar building, but if they don't wanna give you but a hundred fifty, two hundred thousand dollars...
We're not trying to sell it, Mr. Moore, we're trying to use it.
I know that.
And we, look, if, if Central Link calls us today and say, "Hey, city, I wanna move, as, as Francis Thompson and I try to get Southside School as an incubator," okay? School board put it up for sale, all right? We, we, we wanted to, we wanted to try to get business moved up here. Well, we have no place where we can put people temporarily to work, okay? This is a perfect incubator, it's, um, we, we're gonna have the technology in there, uh, thank God for this, but I made an executive decision and you guys went along with it. And, and, and if you wanna back up and crawfish now, because a few, couple of people, a couple of people...
That we make it, but else, we need to...
No, we're gonna make it, we're gonna, look, you can't hope, you gotta make it happen. You see? You gotta make it happen, sir, we're gonna make it happen.
But like you said, we got a year, so that was my hope for, I'm hoping that we do properly, we got a year before we make that decision, whether we go forward or not.
I tell you what, three years, three, three years from now, uh, if y'all pray that I'm wrong, and it flops, and it costs a lot of money, and if I run, I get defeated, then this gives somebody something to run on, gives Mr. Bradford or somebody else something to run on, give you something to run on. Mr. Cotton made this decision, he messed us up.
It ain't...
Hey, you'll have something.
We supposed to be a team here.
That's what I'm trying to be, that's what I'm trying to be, but, but, uh, but I, I know I'm aggressive when it comes to doing things. Uh, thank you, Mr. Bradford, for coming, Mr. Anderson, Mr. Ricky Allen Anderson.
It'll be nine o'clock, we...
How have you been, Mr. Anderson?
Good evening.
It's good to see you, sir.
She said, "Good night."
Thank you.
I'm gonna be briefing Director to the conference, thank you for the...
Yes, sir, thank you for coming.
I'll be briefing Director to the conference, I will be speaking in third person about wanting attention on our homicide victim. Hi, my name is Shay Marie Bryant, I'm five years old. I was born March the twelfth, two thousand and twelve, and I was a student within the Morehouse Parish School System. My life was not about the length of my journey, but every minute I lived and loved. Yes, I could have been a teacher, doctor, lawyer, mayor, and yes, the President of the United States. But, on November the fourth, two thousand and seventeen, my life was cut short. The question was asked, "Who killed me?" I know who killed me, but I cannot speak to tell you. I do know, uh, one person who will speak for me in spirit. His name is Mr. Ricky Allen Anderson. I, Ricky Allen Anderson, will continue to speak for little Miss Shay Marie Bryant and the name of a homicide victim in spirit. Mayor, Board of All the Persons, for the City of Basterd, Louisiana. I have presented to you a decreed that will written request, dated January the eighth, two thousand and eighteen. Declaring motion authorizing the Federal Bureau of Investigation assist the Basterd Police Department in the death of ten homicide victims. I, Ricky Allen Anderson, request the members of the Board of Augment, motion. Second, authorizing Chief Allen County of the Basterd Police Department seek assistance from the Federal Bureau of Investigation in the death of the following homicide victim. Mr. Joseph Knight, sixty-four, John Ray Washington, thirty-one, Riley Lee, twenty-five, Mr. David Henderson, forty-two, Mr. George Michelle Lybey, thirty-two, Mr. Lionel Aberdeen, thirty-nine, Mr. Christopher Musgrove, forty-eight, Mr. Lee Atkins, forty-five, Mr. De Montreal, twenty-five, and yes, Ms. Shay Marie Bryant, five years old. With the approval of the motion, and second, the Board of Augment, let it be said and filed with the Basterd City Clerk, Sandra Moore, City Clerk, Basterd, Louisiana, seven-one-two-two-zero. Sworn on the oath, I, Ricky Allen Anderson, swear on the oath, the statement made here in, request is true to address my blessings and knowledge. Ricky Allen Anderson, five-fourteen, Coman Street, Basterd, Louisiana, seven-one-two-two-zero, Ricky Allen Anderson appear before me on this eighth date of January, two thousand and eighteen. Notice, Diane T. Vaughn, number zero-four-on-six, thirty-four. I don't know if this is gonna do any good. I love the Basterd Police Department on the former office, I know they're trying to do the best they can. But when you're shower-handed, and you just don't have enough experience, sometimes we need to seek help. And that's what I'm asking, the board. I don't know if I'm correct in this now, I ask the board to make a motion, authorizing the chief to seek assistance from the Federal Bureau of Investigation. I'm not trying to embarrass the police department. I don't have a problem with nobody having that. I have a problem with these murders and these hardcore criminals. That's all I have a problem with. So, Mayor, Board of All the Persons, think about it. Chief, I have an respect for you and your office. We need something else, sir. We need something, thank you, Board of All the Persons.
Thank, thank you for your, your time. Um, item number...
Thirteen.
Oh, here we go, item number thirteen. Ms. Mary Hawkins.
Good evening.
Good evening, Ms. Hawkins, how are you?
Yes, I was looking for some unity, but it's divided here. Uh, I just wanna say, um, I, Mary Hawkins, I'd like to inform and concern the commission to help elevate the city of Basterd. I would like to join commission, Morehouse, I mean, your parent home, Wes Madison, Avenue, and Wes Jefferson, in the community, in the most valued interest and purpose of heaven and saving of children and the community. And so, I was wanting to have a gospel feast, and I was wanting to ice the city with they, could they give you a grant on that?
Okay, tell me, tell me, I'm trying to understand, what is it you, you want to do it at the Miller Funeral Home?
Oh, no, no, that was the old Miller Funeral Home.
Yeah, right.
I was talking about, I was concerned about is, is there, and it seemed like it's going down fast.
Well, that's, that's not owned by us, that's owned by, I believe, Reliable Life Insurance, you can call the Miller Funeral Home and ask for Ms. Vicky.
Right.
And you've already talked, okay? Well, they have control of that, and, you know, we don't, you know, it's private, so if you got permission from them, naturally, you could do that now. Uh, and tell me what kind of grant that you would, you're asking for from the city, what do you...
It's for, uh, a raising of funds, I want, I need the grant to have the money, I want the, the children be able to come out on this Saturday, I, I had a plan on April the twenty-eighth.
Okay, and why'd you pick, did you have a reason for picking that location? Uh, si- size, space? What about one of our parks, you wouldn't wanna have it at one of our parks?
Uh, this is what I get you on the stand.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm talking about, when you come into Basterd, everything seem like it's one day.
Okay.
I'm talking about the, the people, uh, the Miller Funeral Home and Wes Madison, I want it over repaired.
Okay.
Repair it.
Yes, ma'am.
And, and whatever needs to be removed.
Okay, I see what you're saying. Well, I will, I will be glad to go to Monroe with you and we can talk with Ms., Ms. Vicky, or whatever, you know, if, if you wanna do that, I'm available.
I'll tag along.
Okay? So, we can go and if you wanna volunteer and, and do some things?
Yes, there's a lot that I would do, and that's really, some of the things that make it, Basterd looks so big.
Yes, ma'am.
It's on the way.
Yes, ma'am, okay, okay, okay. Uh, now, did we answer your questions about anything else? Now, the, the money, uh, grant, I don't know the policies of this body.
I don't think we can do that, we can't, we can't...
Funds, direct funds, yeah.
It's a nonprofit, I mean, had we talked about it early?
Yeah, do you have a 501(c)(3)? Okay, yeah, it's, we can't, the law prohibits us, uh, from giving taxpayer money to individuals and for-profits for sure, oh, you know, individuals are for-profits. Uh, we will, I will try to help you in any way I can personally, and I think some of the other council members may also.
Are you trying to get it at the municipal center?
Oh, you want to do the concert at the municipal, oh, okay, I didn't understand that, I didn't understand, forgive me, okay, all right, well, come talk to, uh, come talk to our Parks and Records Department, and, uh, you don't need a vote from the council, I don't think, does she, gentlemen?
Excellent.
Okay, so we'll try to work with you, Ms. Mary, we know that you all are capable, and, uh, you do a lot of great things for this town, you have such talent, and, and we appreciate you. So, if you'll call me, call Mr. Green, and whoever else might wanna go.
Give me my number, I can just...
Yeah.
What is that get-up, go initiative, you said you're gonna put money in that name, what, what does that, what does that consist of?
That is something that I see that everything seem like, I, I know y'all see it, but it's probably like he going fast.
He going too fast.
Real fast.
But I like you, I like you staff.
Okay, you gonna end up, you gonna end up losing our support.
Real fast.
Yeah, don't, don't say anything good about me. If you wanna get somewhere with this council, don't say anything good about me.
Ms. Mary, you have your... Ms. Mary, you have your five guy. Ms. Mary, I'm gonna give you the wrong number.
Yeah, they'll help, they'll help you on the bill.
All right, thank you. Thank you so much, and please, the office is open. The door is open over here. I'm saying, the mayor's office is always open. So, if you come up or call, and we'll get all the councilmen who wanna help and participate and pitch in and try to, try to help you. And, and give our regards to the Hawkins family.
And he gets up at three o'clock in the morning, so start calling at three.
I will, I will. You can call me at three, Mary. Mr. Maurice, next item, thank you, Ms. Mary. Fourteen. Maurice Norman, Mr. Maurice Norman.
Civic Source.
Yes, sir. Mr. Norman, how are you, sir? The hour is getting late, mister, and I know we've kept you up.
That's fine, good afternoon.
Hey, good afternoon, Maurice.
Good evening, sorry. And I'm here tonight to share some research that I've done on Civic Source out of New York. Contracted your predecessor to mitigate the adjudicated properties that we have within the city of Bastrop as well as Morehouse Parish. We currently have a four hundred and eighty-five pieces of adjudicated property, one hundred and two million and three hundred and eighteen parrots. I'm just gonna touch on some bullet points, so I can be as brief as possible. I got no idea, I have a lot of literature, I'm not gonna go line by line with that. I just gonna touch on the highlights. Maybe we see the interest.
Yeah, I got one.
Yeah, we got one.
The purpose of this research is to give you guys an opportunity to build this thing or a possible constitution of evolution, a possibility to send the the believing that you have with Civic Source. If you'll pull up, look also on your table of contents, you got my abstract, basically says you have a hundred and forty, you're gonna break over that place of adjudicated property. You currently have in your package, you have two spreadsheets which consists of sixty-four properties that are currently on Civic Source's website. There was an individual who wanted to place an eight hundred and fifty dollar deposit that the process can begin. I'm gonna pull up a few, so you gotta consider the difference in Morehouse Parish's assessment of said property and the initial starting bid that Civic Source placed in the same property. You'll look at, line number five, which is one oh eight Dollar Street. Civic Source had the starting bid at fifty-two forty-five. One oh eight Dollar should be number six in your package of the Morehouse Parish assessment of that same property. And it should come out to be, it's assessed at fifteen hundred dollars by Morehouse Parish assessment office as of twenty eighteen.
Six page, that's the first.
Fifty-two forty-five. There's a discrepancy there of a two hundred and forty-nine percent overvaluation of that property. We're scrolling down to line number.
Then it makes, P gross.
On the bottom of the first spreadsheet, and that address should be nine, fourteen twenty-five pairs. Civic Source again has initially, forty-five, Morehouse Parish had that piece of property assessed at nine hundred dollars.
I'm gonna let you take it.
There's a disparity there of four hundred and eighty-two percent overvaluation of that particular property. We would rather long, we'll just skip on over to the second page, line forty-three, which is three twenty-seven West Cypress Street. That should be number nine in the package in the assessed page. There again, Civic Source had it at fifty-two forty-five, Morehouse Parish assessment office at two hundred dollars, which equates to a one hundred and sixty-two percent overvaluation. And I think that, I'm gonna leave it at that, and just kinda give you an idea of where I feel like we are not going to get the services that we have contracted with Civic Source, because if this property is assessed at one price and is overvalued at another, then it's not a moving property as expedited as you may want. Moving along, I gave you guys a second page, Jack, because some things came up at the last, I don't know, maybe get in. The first page shows zero West Madison Avenue. The person, well, it's a little smaller, looks like this, this picture. So, this is the package that I was given. This particular property, zero West Madison Avenue, on the corner of West Madison Street. Because this was the first property that came up for auction, Civic Source.
Is that across from BP, the, what we call the BP? Okay.
This is the very first property that Civic Source put up for auction. It was like a ninety day process, we have to do all the certified letters, we do all their research, make sure that every individual that has some interest in this property, that they're going to be notified that this property will be put up for auction. So, as the policy third, that property was on the sale. The individual that placed his eight hundred and fifty dollar deposit chose not to bid on that property, he forfeited.
His eight hundred and fifty dollar deposit. I've contacted Civic Source on numerous occasions to get clarification on some of the things that they have in place. One of which is, when you place your eight hundred and fifty dollar deposit, that covers the research that goes into trying to notify all of the interested parties. If for some reason their research cost is exorbitant, say someone is out of the country, or incapacitated, or incarcerated, whatever that cost is, if it exceeds the eight hundred and fifty dollar deposit, then they will add that to the initial bid, and you as the bidder does not have the option to opt out. So, let's say hypothetically, if the price was fifty-two forty-five, and they incurred an additional two thousand dollars in costs for research and things of that nature, that now puts your initial bid at seventy-two forty-five, and you're not able to opt out unless someone else places a bid and purchases said property. So, in essence, you're like writing a blank check and having no control over how they fill it in. And I don't think that's something that we need to entertain. On that second page, I pulled Civic Source's, Civic Sources, I'm sorry, attorney's title opinion. And one of the concerns that I have, and I've had several friends that have gone to some of the meet and greets that Civic Sources held throughout the state, you can, they will not give you a clear title to said property, even though they state that they will. And these papers are their, in their own words. On the second page after, well, actually, it's the third page, it's the second page after Civic Sources Attorney's Title Opinion. It basically says, I'm gonna skip down to the bottom, section F that says taxes. And if I'm moving too fast, please let me know, and I will. All right. Down at the very bottom of that paragraph, it states that title insurance or tax sale titles is not guaranteed, and if issued, will likely be more expensive than the same policy without a tax sale involved. And then I went, on the next page, I went and pulled U.S. National Title Insurance Company, which is a company that they are in agreement with to cover these same properties. And basically, it says that they will provide title insurance, but when you look further down, there are multiple exceptions. You'll have insurance, but you're gonna be hard pressed to get them to cover it. Several things, line one, basically, it says that policy does not insure against loss or damage, and the company will not pay costs, attorney fees, or expenses which arise by reason of, and I'm gonna touch on several on line one, defects, liens, encumbrances, adverse claims, or other matters. Down on line four, encroachments, shortage in square footage. Let's just say you're buying this property, and you're thinking it's a fifty by one fifty lot. When you find out in excess, it's a forty-five by one forty-seven, you have no recourse. You're thinking you're buying this, when actuality, you're buying that. And they will not cover it in their title insurance. Boundary lines, fence encroachment, the guy's got his fence two feet over on your property. Title insurance will not cover it, but they, they'll take your money. Moving on, the next page, I took the liberty of putting some of my own personal property in your package to give you an assessment of what property is selling for here in the city of Bastrop. This particular piece of property is on four oh seven Taylor, which is just outside these walls, over by Austin Village Apartments. In two thousand fourteen, I paid two thousand dollars for the property, and it was assessed at one thousand dollars. So, these numbers that they're putting out, in my own opinion, I don't think we're gonna be able to get those numbers through Civic Sources. I also went to the trouble of putting in a cost breakdown of Civic Sources' fees, which show how they get up to that fifty-two forty-five valuation, and that should be the third page in the first packet, right after the spreadsheet. And it breaks it down line by line, and if you'll move down to middle of the page, you'll see a hood one statement in escrow. And when I contacted them about that, they said that's, that's to cover, so if an individual wanted to build a structure on the property, it can tell them what size structure they can build. So, I asked them, I said, we have multiple properties that have no structure at all. So, why do we have to pay two hundred and fifty dollars for a hood one statement when there's not a structure on the property? And I couldn't get an answer for that one. Let's see, what else I got, which I've got a lot, if you'll bear with me.
So, Mr. Norman, let me commend you on the amount of research that you've done. You've done extensive research, and I want to open up for the council members to be able to ask you questions. The adjudicated property, of course, when someone doesn't pay the taxes, the parish, the first is the, all the property as I appreciate it is adjudicated to the parish, and the parish generally will, if it's inside the city, they'll say, here, city, this is yours. And the city sits on it, basically, doesn't title it to the city. We don't go and, you know, do papers, we just hold it. And I believe that the prior administration decided to turn over all property that had been held by the city for five years. I believe, I think that's right. Okay. And, and I've looked at, and I had some concerns, and I sit down with the Civic Source representative here in my office. My concerns were, they make their money off of fees. And I see lots on there that you couldn't sell, in my opinion, for a thousand dollars. And the minimum, and our objective should be to get the property back on the, back on the tax rolls, to get it in someone's hand that's gonna hopefully mow the grass and pay the taxes on it. Other cities have innovative programs like the lot next door, that, that we've been researching all the, the, how they get that done, because a person that lives next door to a burned down house will probably like to knock down the house, may pay Ms. Mary, Ms. Hawkins, to come and knock down the house and have a vacant lot, and then mow that and have a bigger yard. And that person would keep the yard up and, and mow the grass. So, I would like to see the city go toward an innovative approach to getting the property in someone's hands and, and not trying to make this a profit center, because the city's not making all that money. The city's only getting what, the, city's not making that fifty-two hundred dollars.
No, it goes to them.
Yeah. Yeah. So, so I had talked with Ms. Goldman about it, and she said, Mayor, give it a chance. And I said, Ms. Goldman, these lots are not gonna sell for five thousand dollars. No one in their right mind, unless they were in California, thinking that property here is like the property in California, and they might try to buy some up and make, but, but I would tend to agree with your research. I've done the same research, not as extensive as you have, but I looked at the, I watched the, the auction on the third, okay? The property that you talked about came up for auction, I believe, on January the third.
That's correct.
And there was another one on February the something.
Yeah, that's gonna be on the corner of George and Kamel.
Yeah. And when someone pays their eight hundred and fifty dollars, then they'll put the property up for bids. But you don't get your eight hundred and fifty dollars back, that's just gone.
Well, not necessarily, sir.
No.
If you, if you place your eight hundred and fifty dollar deposit, and you are the successful winner, that's deducted from the cost.
Right, right. But if no one bids, as in the case of, as in the case of the third.
Right.
No one bid.
Well, see, yes, because this individual put his own, his or her own money up.
Right.
And for whatever reason, they chose not to bid, and they forfeited their money.
Yeah.
Now, if you place your money, I'm sorry for cutting you off, Mayor, if you place the deposit, and someone outbids you, then you get refunded your deposit.
Right, right. I, I meant that in the case of no bid.
Well, there will not be a bid unless a deposit is placed.
Right. But I'm saying that person who, who makes the deposit, say if you sent them eight hundred and fifty dollars and say, I'm interested in the, the property at one, two, three, X, Y, Z street. And then they'll say, thank you, Mr. Norman, for your eight hundred and fifty dollars, the bid date's gonna be on the fifth of March.
Yes.
You come up to the fifth of March, and you look, and you scratch your head and say, whoa, I gotta pay fifty, fifty-two hundred and forty-five dollars, the minimum bid, right? Because they're gonna cover all their fees.
Exactly.
Yeah. Then you've got to start the bidding at that.
Yes.
And if no one, if no one bids, you've lost your money.
Yes, that's correct.
That's what I was trying to say.
Yes, because.
Even if you don't bid, and no one bids, you've lost your money.
Because over the ninety day process, there are over forty-two letters certified and other things that are, that are taking place. And you, and you can go online and watch the step-by-step process, you know, if you're interested in the property. One other thing that I did find out, the only the initial person has to place that eight hundred and fifty dollar deposit. Everyone else can come on board and just, you know, because if they're the successful bidder, then the initial person would get his money back. If I may touch on one other thing, and then I'll open it up for any questions. At the very back of the last packet that I gave you, is a letter from Philip Lester, whom I think we all know. And I asked him to give me his assessment of fees, if I were to come to him and purchase a piece of adjudicated property, what were my normal fees, because he's done multiple things for me. And basically, it's a breakdown of everything, and his evaluation came somewhere between roughly thirteen fifty to fifteen hundred dollars, and you got Civic Source charging you fifty-two fifty. And of course, like I said, when I say the properties, I took the time, these are all four hundred and eighty-five pieces of adjudicated property as of June of two thousand seventeen, broken down by city, parish, and city and parish. So, if I tell you, believe it.
Is all over, overvaluated, is all of them?
Every bit of it, sir.
Okay.
Every bit. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Let me, let me back that up. Of what I've got on the spreadsheet, there are some properties that are not. But if you look at it at a percentage basis, you know, if, if the goal is to get this property back on the tax rolls, then we may need to rethink this. There was multiple properties in Mr. Moore and several other councilmen aware of. Had we come to some kind of understanding, they would already be back on the tax roll, because I'd already owned them.
Okay. Well, thank you for all of your research, your mountain of research that you've done. And I'm glad that there are other people looking at this, because, you know, I had voiced it to several people. I don't know whether I discussed it with any councilman, did I discuss it with you?
He was telling me about it.
Yeah, okay.
He did, he did discuss it with me.
I did go to meet with Civic Source in Streetport last month.
Okay.
So, everything he's talking about, he's right on point.
Well, I'm hoping that we can do further research, and that you guys, you guys will do research also, and because if our goal is to get property back on the tax rolls and someone to mow the grass, right now, that's one of the major problems that we have. The listed property, we have a mulcher, we got a piece of equipment that we're gonna go and, 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 and clean up these lots with, mulch these lots. Our decision is, you know, that's gonna add to the cost, of course. But we're gonna, we gotta clean up a lot of stuff. And I'm hoping that you all will let us know what you all want to do, if you can communicate. And councilman, let us know if you wanna revisit, look at the contract, you know, because when you go on some of these streets and look at the lots and look at the fifty-two, I, I've done it. I've looked in a burnt out house that I'd have to pay Ms. Mary to come and tear down, or Bear or somebody to come tear down, and, and it's not worth it. It's just not worth it, and we may not be getting anywhere with this. So, if you all can communicate, Mr. Norman, do you have any closing comment? So if you all can communicate, Mr. Norman, do you have any closing comments?
No, sir.
So your wish is for us to look at this?
Yes, that's all.
Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Will you be available to answer any questions if we would, for any councilman, if they want to?
Not a problem.
Okay.
My phone's on twenty-four seven, just like yours, all three of them.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Norman.
Thank you, sir. Very, great, great, great research and great presentation, sir. Thank you. Yes, sir.
We have a call, a call here?
Hmm?
We have a call with his woman.
Yes, I got it, I got it somewhere. Yes, sir. Okay.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I kinda like it, man, he got all our pictures on.
I see it.
Look at it.
Yeah, yeah, I see that. That's, he went all the way. Yeah, Mr. Norman, thorough. Okay.
Need to bring him in on this.
And thank you, gentlemen, for, for your patience in this long meeting.
Ooh, he's long.
Okay, Resolution eighteen seventeen, I would like to table that.
Yeah.
This is just, does, is that okay with everyone? Can I get a motion to table? That's the park, since no one's seen the park, and I would like for you, I invite you, when the National Park Service comes, we will have a meeting, a public meeting before the National Park Service comes, that we agreed to have a public meeting before the National Park Service comes, and anyone, when, when they come and answer any questions, we'll have a meeting, and we'll talk about their, what they recommend for our parks. They do design, they do them free of charge, they have engineers that do topographical studies free, they're gonna do Smith-Wilson Park for us, and, and help us with plans and signage and all of that. We're not getting this park to supplant others, but this property would be the safest place in town to walk, right next to the police station and the sheriff's department. And, and we don't want to put our ladies, 'cause ladies exercise more than men, we don't want them walking with sticks out at the industrial park at five o'clock in the morning when it's pitch dark. We don't want that. We want to provide safe, um, safe parks, and we want this to be the fittest town. And just as a note on fitness, I talked with Mr. Rudy Macklin, I don't know whether you guys remember Rudy, he was LSU's All-American that played professional ball, he went to LSU, he's with the governor's office on exercise, and the Jones administration last year challenged Ravel and Tallulah, I believe, and we won the trophy for exercise. So I called Mayor Lewis, uh, the other day to get him to accept our challenge again. So we're challenging Vilplet, Ravel, and Tallulah in exercising, and, and we'll be giving out more information on that, and we're gonna win a game. So we want the fittest town, the fittest town in Louisiana, and we want to afford people, I'm not saying we're gonna go to the, to the extent that Karoli Park is, but our parks, you talk about Carter Park, there's six tennis courts out there, none of them have been used in twenty years. We have deficiencies that we're gonna convert, there's what's called pickleball and all kinds of things, that we're working with the National Park Service to create environments, what's going on in other places. We're competing with other towns all over this country, and we've got to offer people something to move back here, to retire here. We've got to do it, gentlemen, we can't just business as usual, none of our parks are outstanding, not one, not one. All we do at Carter is play ball, play softball. That's all we do. And we got the municipal center. Now, we are, Mr. Gray, is Mr. Gray still here?
He's gone.
Even Mr. Gray has forsaken us. Mr. Gray has plans to turn one of those tennis courts into a full-court basketball, two at Carter, one for, uh, kids, they got these kiddie courts, that's the, the baseline's only thirty-foot, and they play with a softer ball. We are working, we are working with professionals all across this country that know what they're doing. We are working. Now, anyone who wants to come and ask questions and, and, and park these doors, the office is open all the time, you can come and ask your questions, or, as, we agree with the National Park Service, we're gonna have public meetings to discuss, and we'll listen at them, they wanna know what you wanna do with your parks. Now, some will say, "We're not West Monroe, we can't have a park as, 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 as efficient as Karoli Park." I disagree. I disagree. Why not us? And, and, and people say I'm too aggressive and too, taking you too fast. Well, I don't want Basterd to, to take second place to anyone, and we can, yes, we can be excellent here.
Mayor, can I, can I make a point?
Yes, sir.
You just need to speed it up a little bit, state law violation, you only got, what, twelve more minutes, maybe you'll violate the law.
Okay, okay, all right. Yeah, thank you for making that point. Okay. So can we agree to, can I get a motion to bypass that? To table it? Can we go on? It's on the, it's on the agenda, can we bypass it? I mean, yeah, we, I know we can with a motion, but I would need a motion, I think, to, to bypass this, it's on the agenda, and we need to address it in some fashion.
If you don't address it, it'll automatically fail.
Okay, well, for lack of a, anything, we'll go on. Uh, sixteen.
Let's back up.
What's that?
Does that, does it fail? Are we moving on?
No, it's no action. It's no action unless there's a motion.
Mayor's already committed to say it, it won't come back up this year.
No, that's eighteen.
That's eighteen.
That's eighteen, yeah, that's eighteen.
But if there's no motion on it, then it, it fails.
Good.
For, for lack of a motion, but that doesn't, that doesn't mean it can't be brought back, Mr. Locke.
Yeah, but it's fail.
Yes.
Okay, for the lack of a motion. Okay. Number sixteen then, eighteen dash seventeen fifty-three, Resolution, Mayor of Oldham to authorize next year an agreement, uh, with Conduent Government Systems, LLC, I'm sorry, um, Fire, Fire Chief, can you come up? Chief Crowder and Mr. Williams, Mr. Floyd? Okay, and we've gotta be really brief, we didn't start until fifteen after now, you know that.
We're supposed to start at six, though.
Yeah, I know, but three, three-hour length.
It don't matter, though.
Okay.
Law ain't mine, it's my law.
Okay, okay.
I ain't trying to get in trouble, you.
Thank you, thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Mayor, and, uh, for the councilman. Uh, we're gonna be brief, this, this, this what we're asking is for that y'all go over with, with attorney, uh, contract, enter into a contract, um, with the firehouse software people, basically, to, uh, be able to run the software that we intend to put in the trucks to do, to do fire reports that we're already basically doing. It's, 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 uh, just new upgrade computers in the trucks and stuff like that, but this contract is about the software that runs it. This was already on the budget from, uh, past Fire Chief, it's just took so long because of the, the, uh, getting the equipment up to date and everything.
So to be brief, this software will help us, uh, with efficiency.
Yeah, it'll help with rating, because all of the, all of the stuff that we're doing now is on paper. We have to bring this stuff up to where, when the, the rating people come in, they can ask us certain things, we can go directly to them.
Yeah.
The old system of pulling out a box full of papers, they're not gonna let that slide anymore, and that's where we are.
Chief, what is, uh, what's the cost on this?
Fifty-two, eighty-three?
Go ahead. That's what we're telling you.
The cost is gonna be fifty-two twenty, and that's actually gonna be sixty forty, uh, because two, two.
Two districts.
Two districts are gonna pay forty percent, and we're gonna pay sixty percent.
The ones that are out in the parish as well.
Prior district number two.
Yeah.
It's, it's gonna be sixty forty, and, um...
So how much will the city be out, sixty?
Sixty. Sixty percent of fifty-two twenty.
Okay, about a little over three thousand.
Okay. What's your pleasure, gentlemen?
May I move for the adoption of Resolution eighteen seventeen fifty-three?
I second that motion, Mayor.
Been moved by Councilman Locke, seconded by Councilman Moore, to, uh, to adopt this resolution. I wish we had time, gentlemen, but we don't, to talk about the good things that this will do for us.
Thank you very much, guys, we really appreciate it, thank you.
Yes, uh, it's been moved and seconded, all, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, all opposed? The eyes have it, the resolution is, is passed. Eighteen for forty-two, forty-seven ordinance, an ordinance to supplement. Now, this is not, is Jay Mitchell here? Is Jay here? Okay.
I don't think he was here, Mayor.
Okay, well, Mr. Mitchell is not here, this is Uber, this is to, uh, do a, yeah, this is Uber to, um, the resolution. Now, we, we're just giving notice that we intend to do this tonight. This is not, this is just the introduction of the ordinance.
And we're gonna have to revise, get the...
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
It is the parish, the example.
Well, we redid Ms., uh, Ms., um, Ms. Holmes, uh, has been working on that diligently and with Mr. Pierre, so we don't have the final version, but it's the version that Monroe adopted with, with, uh, with, uh, with, you know, Washoe Parish approved it, and the city of Monroe approved it. So we've been in touch with Monroe, and they've given us their ordinance, and I'm gonna pass it on to Mr. Pierre.
Mayor, can we just table it? Because if we don't do any action, it fails. Can we just go ahead and table it for the night?
Yes, sir, this is an introduction, this is an introduction.
It's the ordinance.
Yeah, I put this...
It's not an introduction.
Okay, go ahead.
An introduction's an order.
Can you make that motion, Councilman?
I make a move, I make a motion that we can...
Motion by Mr. Locke, seconded by Mr., uh, Mr. Green?
That we table it.
That we table it? Uh, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It is tabled, uh, and I think that's the end of it. No, we have ordinance...
Eighteen. Take it out.
Okay, right.
Take it off.
Uh, adjournment, is there anyone that want to entertain a motion for adjournment? Now, okay, here is one last thing we have, uh, we need to, um, vote to expand the agenda just to get this in the record, just to get this in the record. We have a letter from, from Flying Tiger Aviation, from the Flying Tiger Aviation, uh, problem that we have from the Louisiana Economic Development, as we know Flying Tiger failed, and the city is on the hook, the, on the hook. So, yes, please.
I think you gotta get the agenda expanded first.
Uh, we, I need a motion to expand the agenda, we have just a few minutes.
I make that motion, Mayor.
It's moved by Councilman, uh...
Green.
Green.
I second it.
Seconded by Councilman Shaw, uh, in discussion, all in favor? Roll call, roll call.
Mr. Moore, Mr. Prater.
Aye.
Mr. Shaw, Green, Mr. Locke.
Okay. Uh, all in favor, so the, the agenda is expanded. Uh, you have a letter, gentlemen, from DEQ. To sum it up for time's sake, because so much of our time was spent, uh...
Give me one second.
Was spent, and, and, uh...
Thank you.
Okay, yes. Okay, now, we've been in talks with DEQ, the, the long and short of it, I mean LED, Louisiana Economic Development. The city entered into a corporate endeavor agreement effective October seventeenth, 2014, uh, for the construction of hangings, expansive tarmac, taxiways, and other stuff to support the activities of, of Flying Tiger Aviation, which I thought was a great, uh, idea and a great concept. And, um, we are, they advanced funds in the, in the amount of four hundred and seventeen thousand, two hundred and ten dollars and fifty cents. Flying Tiger and the city are obligated to repay the funds, so it, so advanced, subject to the job payroll credits, um, equal to, um, point zero three, um, not, point, point zero three nine nine, almost four cents for each dollar, um, of the total, uh, additional minimal annual payroll for new jobs created. And Flying Tiger earned job credits of ten thousand, uh, seven hundred and forty-four dollars and six cents for performance first year of the project, and twenty-one thousand, one hundred and seventy-two dollars and ten cents in performance of the second year, ending June thirtieth, 2017. The total amount of payroll was, uh, earned credit was thirty-one thousand, uh, nine hundred and sixteen dollars and seventy cents, as of data of this letter, the principal, um, amount of the advanced funds is three hundred and eighty-five thousand, two hundred and ninety-three dollars and eighty cents. That's the four seventeen minus the thirty-one, almost thirty-two thousand dollars. They're charging us four point one percent as they defaulted, the city, in the agreement that the city signed, saying we're our sponsors, and it falls back in our lap. So this is for information, we wanted the public to know that we are seeking solutions, and we're working with DEQ. The reason for the urgency of this letter serves as notice of noncompliance of the corporate endeavor agreement. Flying Tiger and the city have thirty days from the date of the receipt of this letter, that's a cure period, uh, to cure the defaults, to pay them off, okay, or to do something to make it go away. Uh, if the defaults are not cured by the end of the cure period, Flying Tiger and the city shall be declared in default, so they're declaring us in default unless in the next few days we can come up with something. Now, then we'll be declared in default, and they have a note here that they are not trying to go after, uh, Mr. Lawrence Rolf and Flying Tiger, because they're in the, or, they're in the bankruptcy courts, and they can't, so they made that very clear. Uh, so I have been in discussion with Mr. Stanley Banamy, and, uh, the team that's working on this, Steve and, and, um, and Brenda, uh, we're trying to work it out, so that's all I can say, we, we're trying to work it out, and I don't have an answer for that. You know, we don't have answers, and I'll take any comments or any ideas, we're gonna try to work every way we can, because the city cannot afford this, almost four hundred thousand dollars, we've already taken a hit of a hundred and ninety thousand dollars or so on, on fuel charges, and that came out of the last year's budget. So this thing looks like it's gonna cost us six hundred thousand dollars, but we don't have answers right now. But we are gonna rely on our council to help us navigate these waters, our two councils, and, uh, that's all I have, gentlemen. Are there any questions or concerns that you wanna briefly say?
Are you gonna rely on the council to help you navigate this?
Well, I wouldn't do it by myself, if y'all just say, "Give me permission, I'll take care of it." Just say, just give me the word.
I wasn't here, and I'm, I'm not gonna take responsibility for something that I wasn't here.
It does, it's not you.
No checks and balances, that's what we're talking about.
Mr. Prater.
No checks and balances, Mr. Cott.
Mr. Prater.
No checks and balances.
We weren't here during the takeoff, or the flight, or even the landing, but we got the baby, we've got to deal with it, so it's our baby, and, uh, um, we have to deal with it, Mr. Prater. Any other comments? Mr. Moore? Mr. Shaw? Uh, DD, okay, so no other comments? Uh, so the agenda has been expanded, there's no other comments, uh, can we get a motion for adjournment?
We're adjourned.
It's been moved by Mr. Shaw, that we're adjourned. Is it possible to get a second?